It's 6:42. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order September 4, 2012. First --
2-4-1 against.
The first order of business is approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 23, 2012.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
It's been motion approved.
And just for clarification, item six, the -- one, two, three, four, the fifth line down, to delete that zero.
That means abstention. That means that there are no abstentions.
Right, that is proper. That's 2-4, 1 against, no abstentions.
Okay, well then, shouldn't the name Sweeney come after the 1?
Or we could put in parentheses, "Sweeney dissenting," if you'd like.
Okay, I just --
Is that okay?
Yeah, I just, I would have --
To make it clear that you weren't understanding.
2-1 parentheses, Sweeney. I don't know if there's a need for a zero.
Yeah, there is a need for a zero, and because --
Record that there was an abstention.
Yeah, to record there was no abstentions. It was 2-1 to 0.
Do we usually do that?
Yeah. Unless it's unanimous, yeah.
Okay, then, I've just, with the revision that the name in parentheses gets put after the 1, to clarify it.
That's fine by me. Okay, motions been made and seconded with the noted revision. Any further discussion?
That would also occur in the next line.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, before we start with the regular order of business, we do have a swearing-in ceremony for two new police officers. We have Gerard Dewey and Michael Grant being sworn in tonight, and our town clerk, Sue Galvin, is here to swear them in. Gentlemen.
Good evening. So, just to bring the board up to date, the last time that you saw these two gentlemen was 28 weeks ago. Today was the culmination of 27 weeks of adwords training at the MBT Police Transit Academy, a class that began with 50 students and graduated 38, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So before you, tonight is the first official act as they graduated this morning at Faneuil Hall. Officer Grant begins tonight at 11:30. Officer Dewey begins tomorrow morning at 7:30.
Brighten early.
So the first official act, is the 11:30 to brighten early, or is the 7:30?
I'm not sure.
So, we want to welcome them to the department in the first official act, and I thank the board for allowing us tonight to have our town clerk, Sue Galvin, and miss them their oath of office.
Thank you, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You could go to the jury right now. Repeat this once. I swear.
Aye, Gerard Dewey.
Aye, Michael Grant.
Here I swear and affirm.
Here I swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially --
That I faithfully and impartially --
Discharge and perform --
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me --
All duties incumbent upon me.
To uphold the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To uphold the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The bylaws of the Town of Milton.
The bylaws of the Town of Milton.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I can say very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Over this side and catch you.
Yeah.
Easy. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Well.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is item three, confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, we have September 20th as a future meeting date. And I have no problem with September 20th. Anybody else okay with that?
September 20th?
Yep. At 6:30.
Good.
So will we be the second and first and third after that, or?
We're going to try and get to that.
Yes, that's your normal.
Yeah, so the one after that will be on, was that October 4th, or something like that?
Yep.
I believe it's October 4th. So we'll try and get to that.
That's your normal schedule, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It's the first and third Thursday of the month, at 6:30 PM.
Okay. Next on the agenda is citizen speak. Do we have anybody here that wishes to address the board? Seeing none. We do have a public hearing schedule for a gas main grant for a location on Walnut Street, and we have a representative from National Grid.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Regan. I'm the prime representative for National Grid. And tonight, National Grid respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 50 feet, more or less, of six-inch gas main in Walnut Street, Milton. From the existing six-inch gas main near Magnolia Road, westerly to house number 20 for a new gas service.
And that is coming straight down the middle of the street, on Walnut Street?
Looks like the gas main is on the --
It's on the sidewalk.
-- sidewalk, about 13 feet off the property line. So they'll continue, unless --
The dotted line is where the --
The dotted line will be the extension.
Yes, okay. Okay. Anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board with respect to this hearing? Any questions from the board?
I'm good. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the installation of 50 feet, more or less, of six-inch gas main in Walnut Street, from the existing six-inch gas main near Magnolia Road, westerly to house number 20, a new gas service contingent upon the applicant securing a right-of-way excavation permit from the Department of Public Works.
Second motion? Okay, motion been made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is veterans benefit announcement by Michael Cunningham and Austin McGurk. Hey, Michael.
I'm Michael Cunningham, Director of Veteran Services. With me, I have Matt Stanton, the member of the American Legion.
He'd like to come up and join us. He's welcome to.
The reason I'm here is I want this board, as well as the Milton residents that are watching this on TV, to be aware that on Wednesday, September 12th, the American Legion Post 114 here in Milton is hosting a Veterans Benefits Information Seminar. We're going to have it from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and we're going to have a panel. We have experts coming in, in the field of healthcare, education, employment, VA benefits. We're going to have a small, little panel there. So, we just want to get the word out. We would let, you know, we wanted you to know, I brought along some flyers here that -- Do you have anything to add, Matt?
Well, we just wanted to make sure that everyone in the town was aware of it. We're doing the best we can to publicize the event throughout the town. We have, as Mike said, we have a lot of the experts coming in, and we just, it's our effort to push out what type of benefits are available to all the veterans of all generations. It's not just the older generation, but the younger ones that are just coming back as well.
So these are not only benefits available through the Veterans Service Agent, but also just benefits in general that are available?
Correct. We have people from the local, state, and federal level. So, I mean, it'll be all, it's the whole myriad of benefits what's available. And it's basically informational, so.
Great. That's wonderful. Yeah, for, maybe for those of the audience that don't understand what the Veterans Benefit Agent in the town does, Matt, if you could just explain that a little bit, because you have done a tremendous job with outreach. We went, we increased the number of veterans that we've been servicing over the past two years tremendously over what we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Just give yourself a pat on the back and explain what you do.
It is. It's what I do. Well, on the local level, it's, I really do everything. My main function is Chapter 115, which is Massachusetts Benefits. But I'm also, you know, I'm very familiar with federal benefits, on the local level for taxes or stuff like that, you know, I fill in all the gaps first. I wear many hats in this, you know, mainly informational.
And those benefits pretty much go to needy veterans?
That is correct. That is correct.
That are residents of the Town of Milton.
That is correct. Yes.
Wonderful. Anybody else have any questions?
Do you have any ballpark number of how many veterans are in Milton?
No, I guess would be about 2,000. The most accurate census, the most accurate thing we have is the census, but that's self-reporting. And so it's not 100 percent. It's not really that accurate. I would say roughly about 2,000, and that's just a total guess on my part.
Okay, so this will be on September 12, 2012, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, at the Milton American Legion Post 114. That's the one of Granite Avenue.
Yes.
Great, okay.
If I could just throw in one more thing.
Sure.
For those listening, my office has moved. I am no longer in the town clerk's office. I am over in the library. And the hours have changed. Rather than Tuesday and Thursday, I am now in Milton, Monday through Thursday, from 1:30 to 5:00. So, to me, in my opinion, it'll be, it's much more efficient. So, let people know that.
And you got a nice, nice new office?
Yes. Well, privacy, that was a main issue, and we addressed it, and yeah, it's a nice.
Great. Glad we could accommodate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next order of business is a discussion of the fire department budget with Chief Grant. Chief, want to come? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Great, thanks. Chief, we invited you here tonight, this is more just to enlighten the board as to, perhaps maybe the process, but we did notice, you know, taking a look at, and we are responsible, not as much as the warrant committee, but, you know, we are responsible of making sure that budgets are maintained, and clearly yours was, I mean, I believe you turned back money.
We turned back a little bit of money.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even have the figure that we gave you back, but yeah, we did turn back a little bit.
We did notice that overtime was high near the end of the year.
Yes, it was.
And just wanted an explanation of why that occurred.
Well, it doesn't occur every year. As a matter of fact, this is the first year in three years that it has occurred. And you may recall, Mr. Chairman, through your time in the warrant committee, that the first two years I was here, I had the benefit of a bottom-line budget and had the ability to shift money around. So, there was money spent at the very end of the year, in those two years as well. The difference in those two years is it was spent on equipment. And at one point in time, I know the selectmen were opposed to that bottom-line budget, and your committee convinced them to let it go a second year. And that was actually a godsend to the department. It really allowed us to get caught up on the equipment. So, this year here, as we approached the end of the year, and we did have money in that personnel line, we were able to do a number of things with it. The reason that you saw the bumps so late in the year, in a perfect world, first of all, we'd have, we'd have a training budget that allows us to do these things every year. That's not the case, so I'm going to call that, in a perfect world, in the situation we sit in, you know, we'd be able to start doing that over a longer period of time. It seems that every year that I've been in there, that something is lingering. This year here, a couple of things. We had the 350th, which is one of the expenditures that you saw, and we also had a number of medical bills that were pending, that, not that we didn't know we had money, we just don't know how much money until, and like I say, it seems year to year that it's very late June, that it kind of unfolds, and we know what we have to work with. So with that being said, like I say, the first expenditure would have been for the 350th, and I believe that was somewhere in the $20,000 neighborhood. I actually have that, if we need the exact figure. But what was done there is we took a look at the root of the parade and realized that there was a lot of, there was a lot of neighborhoods that had no protection. So, we increased staffing on all of the apparatus. Beyond that, we also took and manned the brush truck and put it over in this neighborhood across the street, over on Hillside, for, if you think about it, the Hillside --
For the file line?
I'm sorry, yeah, the Highland Street area, Buckingham, all of those. Anything south of St. Elizabeth's, up Randolph Ave, without crossing the parade route, we had no way to get to it.
Okay.
So, strictly to handle any medical end of things, we put the brush truck over there with two EMTs on it. We did the same thing with the Kubota ATV that we have down in the Cunningham Park to Lyman Road, Quarry Lane area, also because we would have had no way of handling anything without putting apparatus on. So that was the first that really kind of juggled and required, I want to say, I wanted to hire 23 people for that, and I actually came up a little bit short. So that would have been the first large expenditure. Beyond that, we did a couple of training sessions that were off-site. We did, and each one of these training sessions is two days of training, different people, but to get the working groups in and out, we repeat each one. So we did two days of live burn training over at the Moon Island Academy in Boston, and then we did two days of what we call RIT training, and we utilized Ullin Ring for that. And what RIT training is, is going through a number of exercises. RIT stands for Rapid Intervention Team, and it's a team of firefighters that are deployed, and their obligation is actually rescue of other firefighters. So, it's fairly involved. It is a day-long, very strenuous set of training that just can't be done in service, and obviously, live burning can't be done in service as well. That would account for, probably the one that stands out most, is it was one week where there was roughly $79,000 spent. That was overtime. And that followed all the training exercises that we did off-site. And what we did that week was, I staffed all the apparatus up to NFPA standards, so on the three engines, we added, we added one firefighter. We would have added three to the ladder truck, and we staffed engine four up to, with four men as well. And beyond that, I placed one firefighter in the patrol room for dispatch, which we generally don't have. And what we did that week was a series of in-house trainings, as well as a lot of maintenance that needed to be done. So, in a nutshell, that's about the extent of it.
Okay. I just had a quick question. With the training, you mentioned there was a lot of training going on. But I see the training here in a different line item. Like, for instance, back in --
What, I think I have that same sheet.
Right.
What date are you looking at?
6/22.
Well, let me just find it. Okay.
Yeah, the training came to $28,000, but the overtime came to $14,000.
Okay, the overtime in that situation is average everyday overtime. That's just what it takes us to get through the week.
Well, not necessarily, because if you go back to March, your average overtime is between $1,700 and $7,000.
Mm-hmm.
And then you get to June.
Okay.
And this is not just my concern, it's everybody's concern. You get to June, and then it jumps to $14,000.
Yes, it does.
And then $20,000.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and another $14,000, and then $79,000.
Uh-huh. And I'm going to state again that that $14,000 represents regular overtime. And to explain that, when, and I can show you every, every week of overtime for the last three years, there's been times when our regular overtime has approached $30,000. It's, it's a combination of, you know, injuries that are there, sick time that's being, taking place at the time, personal day use, vacation day use, we're in that period of time where vacation use is high. There was, I don't know what this past week's overtime was, but we have one individual, I meant to print this off to you to bring, just as a comparison. We have one individual who had, I believe it was 62 hours this week, regular overtime, without staffing any extra bodies on.
So are you saying when, when a firefighter takes, is on vacation, and you bring in another firefighter? You have to pay that firefighter overtime?
Yes. Yes. What we have, to kind of give you a little clearer explanation, and Tom has heard this through the warrant committee many times as well, it takes us 11 men to staff everything. So, we don't necessarily hire overtime on a one-for-one basis. But again, right now, as a matter of fact, with, in light of the police bringing in two new officers today, I have two on duty for the first time today as well. They're going to spend a month with us, and then they'll be off to the academy. It took me, basically, a year to get them on the job, just through the civil service process, and then waiting spots in the Mass Fire Academy. So, and again, I can get the exact figures to you right now, but I think we have two groups right now that are operating with 12 men, and two that are operating with 13. So, it doesn't take too much to get into a hiring situation. So, you know, like I say, at this point, at this time of the year, you know, it's not uncommon. Put it this way, it's more uncommon to be the other way. If I showed you every week of overtime since I've been here, I have one week where it's been zero.
What type of training do you, so we spend a lot of money on training, what type of training do we do?
Okay, well, like I say, we did the burn building training, which is live fire exercises. We did the rapid intervention training, again, which is all kinds of exercises that are there to save ourselves.
But, sorry to cut you off, but the $13,000 and the $28,000 for training?
Yep, I'm getting to that.
How do we spend that on training?
Okay, to be honest with you, the $13,000 was an estimate of what took place that week, because it was all in-house, again, we had extra staff. So Patty made an estimate of how much was overtime and how much was training. During that week, what we did was an SCBA familiarization drill. We did what we call long look-out drill, which is, say a firefighter comes into a room, loses the hose line. There's, there's a way to discern which way the hose leads back to the engine. That was one of the drills that we did. We did wall breach drills. I'm not sure, to be honest with you, what else we did beyond that. I'd have to talk to the training officer, but all those drills were done that week.
So just as a point of clarity, on, let me get my thoughts here. So on 6/29, you paid $79,000 in overtime.
Mm-hmm.
And you paid another $4,100 in training.
Mm-hmm.
But the training is the overtime as well, right?
Sometimes, sometimes training is, well, you know what, it all comes out of the same line item.
Right.
There is some that is segregated out, but yes, that, the difference in that $4,100 from the $79 that week is that there was also some off-site training that was done. We sent a number of people over to, I believe it was Brookline, for a foam glass. How to utilize foam. I'm sorry, I left that one out.
So the training or the overtime would basically wind up in the same?
Yeah, like I say, that final week, when Patty made the estimate, it was that people were in the firehouse onsite, didn't, you know, there was no off-site training that week. It was all what we call in-service training. So she basically made an estimate of what that was going to be.
Okay.
And when you expended the $79,000, how many, you know, how many firefighters were in that week?
That would, again, I'd have to look that up to give you an exact figure, but it would be a combination.
Was it most of them?
During the whole week?
Yeah.
I would say most of them got overtime, yes. But to give you exact numbers for the day, I could do that, but I can tell you, well, basically, I told you already, I put a notice out to staff everything to NFPA standards. I don't know the breakdown of what that dollar figure would have been in comparison, because it was also regular overtime for people that would have been on vacation, sick or injured, like we had mentioned earlier. So, like I say, I could certainly put that breakdown together for you.
I mean, I think it's, it's a good idea, when you have money left over, that you do the training and what you're doing to bring it down a little bit, but it just, with me, it just raised somewhat of a red flag, because I'm new to this board.
Well, it, you know, I think it would with anybody, due to the amount of money that was spent in such a short period of time.
When your average overtime is between 17 and 7 grand, and then it jumps to 150,000 in the last month?
I'm going to dispute the average between 700 and 17, because I can bring over, and I'll say it's anywhere between 700 and, you know, over 20,000 week to week.
Oh, I'm talking about since March.
Okay, yeah, but again, the time of year does play into that.
Right.
But, yeah, I, you know, I do think that it should have been questioned. It sticks out like a sore thumb. And again, like I say, in a perfect world, we'd be able to address it earlier. I don't do anything with any of our money over that period, over the period of almost four years that I've been here, or I'm into my fourth, so three complete, that I don't think there's any value to. You know, so I did weigh that out. I, you know, I knew that we were spending a lot of money in a short period of time, but I do think we get pretty good value out of that.
Is this, Tom, is this public record, or no?
Actually, it probably is public record, yeah.
Payroll is public record.
Yeah.
Not the names.
Because I didn't know about this till actually two people called me on it. That's, you know, so, two people, just regular citizens. But that's all I wanted, just an explanation.
Mm-hmm. Like I say, if you feel you want, you know, any further breakdown, I can get that to you. But that, in a nutshell, is where it is. And I would add to that, that, you know, part of the reason, again, there always seems to be something floating around prior to that, that, you know, we've been able to avoid asking for a reserve fund transfer by shifting money into, our medical line item is, I believe, right at $30,000. And coming up on the end of the year here, one of the reasons we did sit on it was we expected that we were going to transfer $75,000 over into that. So again, I just didn't know how much money we had to spend, so we do wind up sitting on it. And, excuse me, one of the other things, the two years prior to me coming on, you have to understand that we actually got to the point where we put engine companies out of, out of service. We didn't have enough money to get through the year. And again, I point to Tom as the chairman, having been through the Board of Selectmen, I don't think we discussed this, Bob, when you were on, but that I've stated to many, many times, that 11 people, day to day, is absolutely my top priority. And, you know, then, again, I want to say that we've got value out of this. That training should take place every year, and it's not available every year. So, we do try to take advantage of it when we, when we can. For instance, next year, that pool of money that we used was basically the salaries of the two gentlemen we hired today. And it was there because we didn't, I expected we'd have them in the academy in January and on the payroll back then, and actually in the street right now, and it just didn't work out. And we're in the process of filling one more spot right now, which again, probably will take the better part of the year. So, barring anything unforeseen, next year, if we're able to do any, any training, two thirds, I'll be looking at two-thirds less money to do it. And with no retirements the third year, we probably don't have any.
And Jack, do you have any, do you have a ballpark of what you gave back?
I don't, to be honest with you. I believe it was, we got it down pretty low. It was a couple thousand dollars, I think.
Tom, I just, since you were the former chair of the warrant committee.
Uh, I don't, to be honest with you. I believe it was, we got it down pretty low. It was a couple thousand dollars, I think.
Tom, I just, since you were the former chair of the Warrant Committee, I'm hearing too often that there's, this, this too high a penalty for not spending your budget. You know, if, if Jack was to give back $100,000 this year, you know, next year, he, he could be in jeopardy of not getting that, you know?
Yeah.
Could that change?
You know, that tends to be...
To get rewarded for giving it back?
That tends to be, that has always tended to be the mentality in municipal government, that if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. It's not a great philosophy, if you will, but, but the natural reaction to a warrant committee will be, well, if you didn't use it, you must not need it, and we're not going to give it to you next year. And there are, there are any number of reasons why, you know, you might not have used it this year, but my, like, for example, like you said, you, you had unfilled positions. The DPW had eight unfilled positions a couple of years ago.
Right. I would say that as an answer, that I would hope, I would hope moving forward, that even if that was the case, that I'd, I'd be allowed to conduct this training, because, you know, like I say, we took advantage of the fact that we did have three salaries sitting there. And, and like I say, I forecast, because I don't believe I have any retirements coming up in the next couple of years, I do forecast two years from now not having any money to do any of this. And, and it is, I've always looked at, I try to explain training, especially high-end training like that we, we've done here. There's, there's some training that you just can't do in service. The output's too much, there needs to be too many people, too, too much equipment. Some of it just needs to take place off-site, and some of it needs to take place at the Fire Academy. And we don't, we haven't taken advantage of that either, because I can't get the value back in, because I can't get enough people trained. So, I, I, I would say that even if we did get to that point, that I hope we would recognize that fact, that, that we do need to do training. And, like I say, I, I forecast in, in two years that I'm not going to have, I'm not going to be able to do this. So, it, it really, I don't view it as a case where I was trying to spend my budget down so that, that we could get money back, because I do believe I had a good argument that two of these people are already hired and starting today. So, that wasn't really a thought in my mind to spend my budget down.
But, do you, like, in your training during the year, do you put off paying the whoever gets paid?
I put
Until June to make sure you got enough money?
No. I put off doing any training that has to pay people, to be perfectly honest with you. We strictly stay with, unless it's something that's really, really critical, taking a new officer, say, and sending him out to the academy to do Fire Officer One and Two, I really, really avoid spending, doing any training that sends them outside that's going to require overtime.
And that does make sense.
It's actually unfortunate that we have to approach it that way, but, but again, you know, the priority is, you know, having three engines and a ladder truck on the street every day.
Yeah, the two things you don't want to do, number one is shut down, you know, and we did have a few years ago where
We did, yes.
You didn't have full-time shutdowns, but you had part-shut
Brownouts, brownouts is what we call them, yeah.
Exactly, of, of certain fire stations, because there wasn't enough budget money to pay the overtime. The other thing you don't want to do is end the year with a lot of medical bills, because it winds up being an unpaid bill. If you don't have the funds to, to pay the medical bill. We're self-insured for fire and police. You know, we, we do have a workers' comp policy now, to a degree.
Right, right.
But it has a huge deductible on it, and then it only covers up to, is it a million dollars or something like that? I forget what it is.
Emery would be on the details of that.
Yeah, and it's got a huge deductible, so it basically doesn't cover the knee operations and those things.
Right.
The backs, you know, the disc problems. But those can get pretty expensive, and if you can't cover them within your budget for that year, they wind up going through as unpaid bills into the next year. You can't use the tax rate to pay unpaid bills. You've got to find other money. So, they cannot be factored into next year's tax rate. So, you'd have to find free cash or some other available fund to pay for medical bills that, you know, went over to the next fiscal year.
It can get you in trouble pretty quickly, too.
Can, yeah.
We, you know, I won't, I won't give a location or a year or anything like that, because you're dealing with someone's private issues as far as medical records go. But we had an incident where I had two firefighters go down with injuries that required surgery. One, one was actually injured twice. He alone in, in medical bills, never mind the overtime that it took to replace him, was $60,000. So, that one fire put me, just on medical bills alone, in the 75 to 80,000 range. So, if, if, hopefully that gives you some clarity as to why you see some aberrations at the end of my contract, or at the end of my budget cycle. It's actually that I'm taking care to make sure that we do get through the year. And then, you know, doing the very best I can to put value on what we, what we pay out. You know, it's, it's one of those cases, if I was trying to spend the, the budget down just because we had, you know, money left over that I had to get rid of, it would have been a case of, you know what, try to hire me 20 guys every day and let's see how far it takes me. I was not going to go beyond staffing to NFPA standards. I felt that's where the value ended. So, there was, there was a thought process to it.
Great. Thank you, Jack.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next, item eight on the agenda was discussion of East Milton Deck with Senator Brian Joyce, Joe Lynch, Bill Clark, Richard Wells, and it was going to be a PowerPoint. I don't see, I don't see Brian Joyce here. Do you know if he was planning on coming at a?
No, he's planning on being here. I think he was running over.
Okay. We can do it out of order, then. We can take the Milton Chamber of Congress first, and the discussion of, you know, suggestions for traffic, pedestrian safety, parking improvements.
Who will come off the show?
One up.
Good evening, Selectmen. We're going to give you all a little more paperwork. Every time we come, we seem to hand you a lot of paperwork. If you could pass two down, please. Three. We hope everybody has one. One sec for us.
So, same Plan A and Plan B?
These are, these are updated
Okay.
For traffic and public safety.
Okay.
Suggestions, which we'd like to go over. I have an extra set, in case you want a set or the planner. What would you suggest, if anybody wants it?
We'll take it.
Okay.
So, you have a copy of it?
He doesn't have this later, just wondering.
We'll get to this.
You weren't deliberately off the list. I made five sets. I thought that would be enough. I'm sorry. It, it is derived. Board of Selectmen, my name's Paul Midori from Fitness Unlimited.
Paul Hovens, spokesperson for the Chair, Chamber on this, on this project.
Steve Weiser, I'm the architect and designer.
So, I'd like to start by saying that the, the main focus today is traffic flow and public safety. We have some suggestions that we think the square needs a lot of work right now that can be done before anything else happens, before any of Plan A, B actually happens. I, I, because I've been in the square 32 years, as I drive around from town to town, I keep seeing the same thing. I see business district after business district improving themselves, reinventing themselves, evolving, looking much better, much more functional. And I see this everywhere, but unfortunately, it, East Milton is still lagging. And I think it's lagging greatly behind. East Milton is not the square it should be. It could be a much better square. And, you know, example after example, you see pedestrian safety, traffic flow, arrows, guidelines, all of these kind of things, everywhere I go. I mean, I've been to places like, I hadn't been in Medford in 20 years, totally changed. Taunton Center, I hadn't been in years. Braintree, you know, lights, you, you name it, beautiful light, lighting, things like that. But I'm seeing that everywhere I go, and I'd really like to see this happen for East Milton Square, as you know. The businesses in East Milton Square are paying a 57% higher tax rate. For that higher tax rate, we would love to see some help from the Board of Selectmen. And I know that we have a lot of plans in front of you, and I hope we can execute some of them in the near future. You know, just to, you know, I don't like to throw out too many numbers, but just for, for instance, those, many of the merchants, if you don't own the building, we actually get passed along the tax bill as a percentage of rent.
Okay.
And we're happy to pay the bills. Fitness Unlimited, last year's tax bill was over $30,000 for that one little store in that building, okay? We are glad to pay that money. We want to help the town out, but we would like some of these improvements, because they're really lagging. I also would give you a notice from, from the federal government called earmarks, use it or lose it.
Yeah, but I'm aware of, yeah.
You're all aware of it, yes.
Sadly aware of it.
Sadly aware of it. Brian Joyce says that it's a very high hurdle to get that money back, the federal money. So, it is still possible. It's a high hurdle. If you want to comment on that a little bit.
Yeah, it's disappointing. We, we had some momentum there, and we hoped all the funds that we recently got, and with these funds, that we actually probably have excess of what we really needed. This raises some questions. I'm going to work for the chamber to see if, if there's anything that can be done to, to try to hold some of it or all of it. I don't know if we could commit to, to doing some part-time, excuse me, some of the temporary, the, the new work under this money. I will work with Congressman Lynch's office and also the DOT to find out what, what needs to be done.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that the problem is DOT can't, even if we put something into them right now, by the time they give us plan approval, we'll be beyond the deadline of, for leasing the
Very difficult, but not impossible. So, I'd like, I'd like
Anything's worth a try.
Respectfully ask the Selectmen to do anything they can to save that money. I believe the state would, would fund the project anyway. If not, the Chamber will find some way to make this happen. I don't think money's a huge problem right now. We have probably still, from what I hear, 1.5 between the state money. That's what I'm told by Brian Joyce.
Right.
Roughly. And so, we might be a little under, a little over, but it doesn't kill the project in any way. So, there may be a way to show them one of our plans and maybe escrow the money. I don't know. Those are the kind of things that have to be looked into. Possibly, don't forget, this plan has been executed. We've come a long way. We've spent $140,000. To have it taken away now, I don't know. It seems very abrupt. I just found out about this yesterday, okay? And I would think that a lot of states are going to say to the federal government, we need an extension. We have all these things we've been doing. Can we have a 90 or 100-day extension? It's actually October 30th, so I think we really have to look at that.
Correct.
October 30th, and then all the funds have to be used, I believe, by the end of 2013. Still needs a lot of study.
Right.
And of course, Paul will do that.
I mean, the, the fear is, and what, because what the state is looking at doing is not turning funds back, but redirecting them from one project to another project, so that the state doesn't lose them.
Right.
So, that's, that's the problem we're dealing with, if the state sees something that's a sure thing out there that, that they can utilize it on.
Funnel the money right to it.
They're going to funnel it right there. And that's, but I agree with you that we, we should do everything we possibly can to try and, try and save that 800 or so thousand dollars.
Greatly appreciated by, by the merchants. So, we'll go on to, I'm going to have in just a second, Steve Weiser, he's the architect on the project for the Milton Chamber. I'll have him go through some of the preliminary suggestions we're going to make. But basically, we deserve a safer and better square, and I think the time is now. I think we've been talking about this way too long. I respectfully ask the board to move forward as fast as they can. Safety first. I want to tell a quick story. I've told this before, but I want to tell it again so people hear it. The people coming across the deck, particularly at the Bruegers Crosswalk, that Bruegers Crosswalk is a nightmare. It's a nightmare for a lot of reasons, but just two weeks ago, again, I watch this all the time, two young girls about 15 years old with two very small girls in hand are standing at that light, okay? And they're waiting for the light to turn. They press the button, okay? Fantastic. Waiting very patiently, got the little girls in hand, fantastic. The story looks good so far. The light finally turns when it gets to cycle, so they get, so the light goes red there. After the light goes red, I see two cars from the slip lane go right through the red light. Never even saw it, because again, they are looking to their right, and then finally they get a clearance, and they shoot through.
Yep.
Okay? And they don't see it. Fortunately, there's about a three-second delay before they get the walk signal. So, the red light's up, but they don't get the walk signal for about three seconds. The third car from the slip lane doesn't see them until they step out and then slams on their brakes, and she goes, oh my God. She puts her hands up and says, I'm so sorry. So, this is something I see all the time, and it's an easy thing to correct or at least make it a safer intersection. We'll talk about those next. Traffic flow, what, what Steve Weiser has done here, and in the first diagram, you will see, I don't know if this will show on TV, all of the simple striping and arrows that need to be done. And if, for reference, we will also have a existing conditions aerial photograph, which is your last page. That shows you the basic area. So, I'll turn it over to Steve, but what we're basically saying, that all of these arrows, we see everywhere else in all of these other business districts, and they make a tremendous difference. Only about six months to a year ago, we put a dotted line across. Now, I've heard these called a bunch of things, these dotted lines. I call them guidance lines. I've heard that word before. I've heard them called lane delineators?
Delineators.
Okay, so that's the word. I've also heard them called drunk lines, which I think is kind of funny. But that made a tremendous difference. It guided people through those two lanes. That one little change about six months ago, we saw a big change in the traffic, people knowing that there was actually two lanes to go right around the post office. So, Steve will start right with number one and work his way through.
Okay, so we're on Plan Number One, which does include the slip lane. And what we're asking, while I'm putting all these, you see the markings in the street, it's just to help guide people around East Milton Square. So, here you are, Number One, you're coming down Adam Street, you're heading east, and I'm suggesting you put three to five of the, the turn arrows in the, on, on Adam Street. Go past the crosswalk where you have in front of the post office, and you're clearly brought around to the right. Now, you're in, you're on Bryant Avenue, and on the left-hand lane, I'd like that to be a left-hand turn. You've got to go left if you're in the left-hand lane. And in the right-hand lane, you can either go left or you go straight. Once you get to the end of the Boulevard Street, you have the choice. You either go right onto Boulevard Street, straight to Bryant, or you go left around the, the square. You get down to Number Three, coming off of the freeway up there on Granite, there's three lanes. The right-hand lane, I think that should be right turn only. I think once you come up to the light, you should be able to, you should stop, and you should be given the right on red after you stop. The center lane, you go straight or you go right. And the left lane is a straight ahead. Okay? Number Four, now you're on, you're on, on Adam Street going west. There are three lanes there right now. I'd like that to go down to two, and we take one of the lanes out that was, that's there now, helping people, actually, the two lanes coming east to, no, coming west to east. We're going to change those around, so there's two lanes going west, turning you right onto Granite Avenue.
That was done because of, of course, the closure of Adam Street. It's been like this a long time. And since the closure of Adam Street, two lanes used to merge right there at that little island. Ideally, in the final design, that island would be enlarged by one lane, and now, as you know, traffic is flowing very, very well since Adam Street is allowed to have a right turn on red. That's working very, very well. We see a big difference, but it could work even better if five, six, seven cars could stack at that spot and take two turns to the right, two lanes to the right. So, it's, it's a waste of space right now.
Right. But then again, as Paul had mentioned, down by Item Number Five, that crosswalk needs to be highlighted a bit better. It just needs to be made more visible to drivers, fear that, you know, pedestrians are going to get hurt. So, this is Plan A, and the difference between Plan A and Plan B is that on Plan B, we get rid of the slip lane, and the traffic pattern is pretty much the same, it's the same thing. What we do like about Plan B is that the park gets larger, we get a few more cars in the parking lot, and
Take away the slip lane problem that he was talking about.
The slip lane problem goes away. And this is, we'd really like to be able to test this with barrels in front of the slip lane right now, to see, does it really make sense? Is it going to work out? It's the, it's the plan that we, we prefer, if we can get to be.
Absolutely. And we've laid out, if you look at the bottom, we've laid out for whoever the the procedure is, obviously, the traffic commission needs to look at this, I'm sure, town planner, DPW, but we've laid out the instructions right here in order. We're saying, you know, do one, two, three, four, and then two weeks afterwards, we're suggesting to the Board of Selectmen that you try closing the slip lane. Sure, there's been some controversy over closing the slip lane, but the arithmetic works very, very well. As far as we know right now, and we need another set of counts, and probably Bill could provide them possibly, that there is a hundred and eighty cars tops using the slip lane. And as I gave the arithmetic before, there is forty green cycles in front of the Shell Station.
Was a hundred and eighty in how much period of time?
One hour.
In an hour, okay.
In prime hour, as far as we know.
Okay.
Needs further study. So if we have a hundred and eighty, and there's forty green lights in front of the Shell Station, those cars all need to get to that light. That light, if you divide it by forty, it's only four and a half cars per light cycle that need to go around the deck, okay? That's not bad at all. As a matter of fact, other than the heaviest part of rush hour, I've watched this with a stopwatch, I'll be honest. With a stopwatch, and I've seen that that light is actually still green, and it's completely clear. So that light, most of the time, is green, all the cars go through, and there's probably five, ten, fifteen seconds with nobody there, most of the time. Which means that four point five cars could get along around that area much better.
I would venture to guess it's like four to five o'clock, that's probably, in the afternoon is probably the worst.
I'm thinking seven-thirty, eight-thirty, I'm not sure, Selectmen-
At night?
No, in the morning. I think the worst commute's in the morning.
Oh, I didn't-
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, because you have all the Boston traffic shooting down, some go that way, and some go another way.
Yeah.
And as I said before, I did explain to people that, remember, once people go around this circle, now, without the slip lane in place, they have a hundred to a hundred and fifty yards to decide to get into the right lane, if they want to go into the marketplace, which approximately thirty percent of the cars are going to the marketplace at this point. The other problem is that people from the slip lane have to shoot across two lanes, as I explained before, very rapidly, and that's a problem. The other maneuver that you will see day in, day out, people from the slip lane will at the last minute decide this storefront parking there. I'm gonna actually back up, and I'll see this every day, it's a nightmare, I hear, I hear brakes slamming on all the time, and they actually back up and try to get in here. All of that is eliminated by sending the traffic around, okay? Once you send the traffic around, they have plenty of time to get in the right lane, they have plenty of time to get the storefront spaces, and they have plenty of time, the most important thing in my view, is they have plenty of time to look at that light in front of Bruegers. It's not a last-minute thing out of the corner of their eye. They get to see that change from yellow to red, and they're looking straight ahead, they're not looking over the shoulder, then turning around quickly. So I think that's a, a very important thing, that we hope we can get to a real-world test. The other thing is, the original test that was done by Howard Stein and Company, I don't think it's valid anymore. The test, the counts that they did, and the electronic test that they did, was pre-the closure of Granite Ave. Nobody could have guessed how, I'm sorry, Adam Street.
Yeah.
Nobody, I don't think, could have guessed how well that worked. The day after that, that Adam Street was closed, the whole square functioned better, it actually felt better. Wasn't one person didn't say, "Whoa, what happened here?" It's not jagged people shooting all over the place, okay? So, nobody could have guessed that, and that's why I think that we should really consider, respectfully, I would ask the board to consider doing another traffic test by hiring somebody to do the electronic test, computerized simulation. I think that needs to be redone. But, we're asking first that we find the funds to do all of these improvements. Most of the crosswalk right now are completely worn out. They haven't been repainted. There is no guidelines to get around this deck. It's literally a mess, and we'd love to see it corrected.
Going around the post office is really critical, those, those lanes, where people get confused, coming around to the left.
Yeah, and, and-
That needs to be addressed right away.
And the pre-guidance arrows are very important. We have one set of guidance arrows right in front of the crosswalk, in front of the post office. Well, most of the time, those are covered up with a car, so people coming up to that way don't even see them. Those guidance lines tell people what to do, and they work fantastic in the other business districts.
And right now, it's visually confusing, too, when you come in there, because you've got all the barriers and everything else up there.
It is a mess, yes. It, it really is. So, we, we, we hope to get to that. I would, I would respectfully ask again that the, whatever the procedure is, traffic commission, whatever, we would be glad to attend a traffic commission meeting, and go over this plan again. The plan is probably ninety percent there. Of course, the town planner, DPW, would have to refine those little arrows and stuff. There's, there are actually lines right now that are off-center, they're quite a mess, they could be covered up and fixed, particularly the ones in front of the Shell Station. There's a line that actually moves the traffic to the right, and it's off-center from the next set of lines, so it's kind of a mess. So, I would like to take a second to thank Brian Joyce. Brian Joyce, for years we've been fighting to get this project done. We know that this will be a better place right now when this is done. We know if we get to this, we know this is gonna be a better place. There's no question in my mind. The many, all of the merchants believe it, all of their employees believe it, and the thousands of people that use the business district believe that East Milton will be a better place if this gets done. Brian Joyce came through for us big time on this. I don't think it would have come to fruition, I don't think it would have been possible without Brian Joyce. So I want to thank him from the chamber, and again, from all of the employees, and all of the merchants, and all of their, their customers, that have been crying and yelling for parking for many, many, many years. I'll close with saying, "Let's build something great." You know, "I think we could do this together." Let's, let's build something that is functional. Let's build something that makes a better park. Let's build something that people will use. Let's build something that the merchants will not just survive, but thrive. That's what I'd like to see. There's merchants that are just surviving. I'd like to see them thrive. And lastly, let's build something that our children will be proud of and use for generation after generation. Board of Selectmen, thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
One other piece I just wanted to mention, when we met before, there was a question from some of the board members about pricing and what the construction costs.
Yes.
And I owe you some homework on that. I have spoken to a couple of mass highway-qualified contractors, and I'm gonna try to get them to walk the square with me.
Yeah, again, they're not as built plans, but at least a ballpark of what it might be looking at.
Successful companies and Milton residents who own them, so I'll see what I can do.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we wait for Brian to get here, Bill, do you want to just come up and-
He's on his way.
Okay, you want to come up and just kind of talk about the, the road design for a little bit? Oh, yeah, yeah, maybe she is, she is. Yeah, let me just, yeah, that's a good idea. I'm gonna take one thing out of order first, and then do that. Sorry, Bill. Item number twelve on the agenda is a discussion of the Lavery College move to Milton, and I believe we do have, Maureen Smith, is it?
Yes, my name's Maureen Smith, I'm the president at Lavery College. Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the college and our move to three oh three Adam Street. I did bring some kind of basic information about the college, in case you don't know about us. We're-
It's a big building, we're next to Carney Hospital, but-
That's right, a hundred and twenty years old. We specialize in nursing and allied health programs. We have about seven hundred and fifty students, and that's a really sort of healthy enrollment for us. We have no residence halls, our students are non-traditional, a little bit older, average age thirty. And, and over ninety percent are drawn from a ten-mile radius of Dorchester and now Milton. Milton, Hyde Park, Dorchester, Mattapan, Randolph-Stotan, and sort of down that Route twenty-eight corridor down to Brockton. We purchased a five-acre parcel of land at three oh three Adam Street from the Sisters of St. Joseph, and closed on August sixth. This is sort of that front piece of land right on Adam Street, on the campus of Fontbonne. Previously, it was Aquinas College, which closed in two thousand. So, we are embarking on a three point three million dollar renovation to both bring it up to code, make it ADA accessible, introduce some technology into the building, and we hope to make the move from Dorchester sometime in May of two thousand and three.
Wonderful.
So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, or address any concerns that you might have.
How big is that building compared to what you, is it more space for you, or less space?
It is. It's more square footage. The layout of the building is a little bit better for us. The classrooms are better sized. We have very, very few classrooms at the college that accommodate more than about twenty-four students. There, you know, some grounds there, hopefully the possibility for parking for our students. There's none right now currently, except in the evening.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and obviously, that's a concern for, Milton has obviously-
Yes.
-limited parking spaces.
Sure.
So will you have parking on the, enough parking to, on the premises?
Yes, we're working on, we're working on a number of site plans right now, addressing the parking. So I don't have anything to share with you at this point, but we're, we are trying to sort of net about two hundred, between two hundred and two hundred and forty parking spaces on that property. There's over a hundred and forty there now, so.
Okay. Can you, can you have more students here, or less than the place you're in right now?
We're not trying to grow by adding a lot more students. Some of our programs are fully or partially online, and I think that's gonna be the growth potential for us, as well as some satellite, you know, campuses that are geographically, either in southeastern Massachusetts, or, you know, up on the North Shore. So, this building will allow us to operate a little bit more conveniently than we have at twenty-one-twenty Dorchester Avenue, but it doesn't allow a huge amount of space for us to grow.
Okay. Are you keeping the Dorchester Ave campus, too?
We are not.
No?
No. We are not.
The site that you're going, well, I actually know Lavery from, I had some girlfriends that went there way back when.
Oh, you did?
Sure, right, and I know all about the Aquinas, the Aquinas Junior College that you purchased. That was, the Aquinas, the addition there was purpose-built for schooling. The original structure was the home of a congressman by the name of Wigglesworth.
Yes, we've done some research, and the original mansion is really just stately, and, and had generally been well-maintained, and it's beautiful. And then there is a classroom addition on the side, built in nineteen sixty-one, and then a much, much larger addition that wraps around the back, that was built in nineteen sixty-seven.
And the students there, I noticed you have a number of seven fifty-eight, would they, they wouldn't be coming there all at once, right? Would they be-
No.
-day students, night students?
We have both day and evening programs, and also programs on the weekend, although they're limited. And our students, when they get into their clinical rotations, remember we're healthcare, you know, programs only. They're, they're not on campus for two full days a week. They're out at their, you know, clinical site. So no, there would never be a time when there would be, you know, seven hundred-plus students on the campus at once.
So you feel that's the, that two hundred-plus parking spaces would be plenty to park all, all the cars?
Yes.
Now, in terms of traffic, it, and I know all you really have to go to, by right now is, is what you have out in Dorchester Ave, but, pretty much dispersed between the day, or, you know, is it heavier in the morning, heavier, you know, the hours where, where more of your students tend to have to get to and from campus?
I think there may be some days when it's kind of heavy at some point in the morning, and, and at one point in the afternoon. I've been at Lavery long enough to remember when Aquinas was there. And so, I, I, I do remember that they, you know, would sometimes have a police officer on Adam Street to help direct the-
Right.
You know, the traffic there. We're, we're certainly open to doing whatever it takes to keep that entry and exit point safe, to be good neighbors. So we're, we're just, you know, assessing that now.
Okay.
We hope, in the next month or so, to identify some of our neighbors, and get to know them a little bit more, and invite them over to the site. As I say, our students are really non-traditional. They tend to have jobs and families, and, you know, are balancing school, you know, with all of that, so they tend to come for class, maybe a little bit of work in the library, and then they're, they're off home again, or off to their, their jobs. So, it wouldn't really be a traditional, you know, type of a campus.
Three point three million is a pretty sizable-
It is.
-construction job, and a pretty sizable fee for the town of Milton, too, by the way. What are you gonna do there? Just sprinklers?
Well, the building is not ADA compliant at all, so a large portion of that, between six hundred thousand and one million dollars, will be used to make the building handicapped accessible, or, or largely handicapped accessible, including the installation of an elevator. There's no elevator, there are no lifts. With each addition, each addition was added on, and it's not flush with, with what came before. The, the building is not air-conditioned, so again, another half a million dollars or so will be put into central air conditioning, you know, for the building. And then there are other repairs to the roof. The central air conditioning requires a major upgrade, and the electrical service-
Is the building sprinkled?
No, adding, you know, the, the appropriate, you know, fire, safety systems. You know, Aquinas closed before there was really technology as we know it in the classroom, so there's gonna be a lot of infrastructure, you know, work in order to have a Wi-Fi environment, you know, for our students. At this point, most campuses, even non-traditional ones like ours, are cognizant of safety and security, so lighting, controlled access, maybe even some video surveillance. So yeah, that pretty much eats up the three point three million dollar budget we have for renovation.
Will it be great to see the property become vibrant again, so that's looking forward to that.
We're hoping, and we're hoping to be good neighbors, so.
Great.
Any other question? You know, we, we will be, you know, working closely with town officials as, you know, the plans become more detailed, so I'd welcome other opportunities to share with you what we're doing, and if you have any other questions, you know, I'm happy to come back.
I'm good, yeah. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Bill, would you mind coming up, and just talking just a little bit about what the Plan As and Plan Bs, and, not so much that, but, just, again, we keep talking about, but never quite seem to get there in terms of the, the traffic flow improvements, in terms of signage, in terms of pedestrian friendliness, wayfaring. Yeah, I don't know if what's in here is pretty much what's in the Hudson Report, because I don't really, been a while since I've looked at it, but, but what can we do now, I guess, to get this thing?
I'm gonna let, so everybody can see, let's use the- Can you guys see this?
No.
There we go.
There you go.
Can you zoom in? All right. When the chamber was here, and they were talking about Plan B, if you remember when the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee was talking, they had parking down here, they had switched the parking lane here. Well, the chamber's proposal is to leave what is the, take what was Adam Street- take what was Adams Street and the slip lane and put a parking area on it. What that does is that takes away and it makes it much more pedestrian-friendly crossing from the Jessen Building to the post office, crossing from St. Agatha's up to the post office, going from the post office over to the middle, the middle island at this point. It gives you a destination point within the middle, whether you're going to the green space or parking lot. It gives you a way to get there from the different places.
Right.
What we're doing is we're taking all the traffic and everybody goes around. It's actually a, it's a concept of the original proposal for the roundabout, but it's, it's a hybrid of that plan. What they're talking about is putting in anywhere from thirty-two to forty spaces within the parking so that will be on what was road surface. It would keep what is green, will remain green, and creates the parking area in the other part of it. It also creates dedicated lanes that we can now park around the island here. It changes the width of Adams Street as we would now be going west. It doesn't do anything to the other recommendations that were in the East Milton Parking Study on finding those other spaces, whether they are down on Bryant Ave, which is further down on this plan. If, if they switch to the other plan, I'll go in front. Here's what we have now. And if you can, you can see now, this is the post office here, Jessen Building. We're going east on Adams Street. We've got two lanes that are going to go down. We've got one that uses the slip lane. What we're talking about doing is changing from this sidewalk, this edge of the pavement here to here and creating this area in here would now be the parking area. This will be the green space. What we're talking about is cutting back on these raised areas and making the interior all flat so that all becomes one level. There are some pretty mature trees out here. I'm not sure that you want to take and remove all of the structures because you won't be able to keep those kind of trees in there. You don't have enough room between there and the deck underneath, so you need some of this raised platform. And we can cut some of these things back to give that flatter area in the middle. This does accentuate some of the new striping that was done down here. I believe that was done in July?
No, June.
Actually, it was done in April because this was flown April third.
That's correct. That was actually done last fall prior to the April flyover.
Okay. I, I know that we have another plan that is showing, DPW is putting it together in the engineering department to look at all of these islands. The plan would be to remove the light that's right now in here and move that signal light out here so it gets closer to the traffic. It should be up over this crosswalk, not looking in here. You can see there's, there's a black line right here. That black line is the streetlights. We want that same black line to come out here at the end of that point, and you really can't see the point at home. We have been listening to the chamber, listening to the, please try blocking this thing off. I know that Mr. Lynch and I were talking this afternoon and before this meeting on what it would take. We also did look at some numbers that John Thompson and his crew went out and did take some numbers in here, only we didn't grab them down here. We did see, since we've done this, we've seen a, a decrease that it uses, this has used maybe a third of what it was before we did this. So it, it, it does tell us that maybe we should go back and look at it.
Okay, good.
Do you have more for?
I guess in terms of, and I'll let the other two slide and ask some questions if they want to, but just in terms of starting to do some of this, can we, can we start to get a timeline put on to starting to move forward, not necessarily with the park part yet, but, but the rest of the stuff around it? We had also talked about at least putting up some, not permanent, but, but some better barriers, you know, some more pleasant-looking barriers up so that we wouldn't be looking at those, you know, orange gates. You know, so I guess that's the question, is when can we get started with some of the wayfaring, you know, and kind of finalize what we're looking at for a plan there?
I think your question is, can we? Yes, we can. The, I think the bigger issue at the moment is, the chamber gave you the issue of use it or lose it. But there's, there's more to that than just use it or lose it. We've got, it's a discussion that we can have with Brian, with Joe, with Richard up here, at which point we can go back and hit what we can do possibly.
Perfect, okay.
And I think, let's start there.
That's perfect.
And we can work into how, what money we can use now.
Okay, sounds good.
Brian, let me come on up now. Joe?
There you go. How are you doing?
Very good, how are you doing? Very well, thank you. I have with me from my staff, I have Emily Dix, who just told me a moment ago that today is one year that she's been with me.
Congratulations, Emily.
She's a very bright attorney from Colorado by way of Tufts University and Boston College Law School. In that year, she's received a promotion, and if things go well tonight, she might get another one. So I have a, I was asked to join you to give you an update on the East Milton Deck and some other matters, and we have prepared a presentation, just an overview on State House matters as they affect all of us and then in particular, as it respects the town of Milton. So we've put it together in a PowerPoint presentation that Emery can put that up on the screen right now. All right. So the first thing on the agenda, if you go to the next slide, is to talk about the fiscal year thirteen budget that we just completed. We're in fiscal year thirteen.
Saying all about it on the other end. There you go.
Okay, we talked a little bit about the Chapter Ninety funding. That's important to Joe and to all of the town with respect to the roads and bridges, healthcare cost containment, the very significant legislation that we just recently passed, economic development and job creation, another bill that I was involved with, pretty important. In fact, this may have been the most productive legislative session since my time at the State House. Casino gambling, which caused a lot of debate and publicity, a bill with respect to habitual offenders, so-called Melissa's Bill, foreclosure prevention, and then we get to some Milton items, in particular, some things, some good things we have happening at Houghton's Pond, the transportation bond bill and Mass Works projects. The fiscal year thirteen budget was, I think, very good for cities and towns, and in particular, the town of Milton. We have since two thousand and eight been grappling with less revenue than we've ever had before and of course, greater expenses. This budget had no new taxes, uses a combination of ongoing revenue initiatives, one-time resources, money we had set aside in the rainy day fund, and spending reductions, significant reductions in some areas to close a one point four billion dollar budget gap. We are constitutionally required to have a balanced budget each year. Unlike the federal government, we have no deficit spending. That budget gap is the smallest it's been since fiscal year oh eight, so the, the economy is improving. We see it. It's slow and steady, but I think we've come through this recession perhaps better than the other state in the Union, partly because we had socked away so much in our rainy day fund and also because we had taken steps to address the revenue shortfall almost immediately. We were able to increase the local aid, that is, the money that comes back to cities and towns by about three hundred million dollars, two hundred and eighty-eight point nine million dollars over last year, including significant funds on restricted local aid that would come under the select boards' purview. Chapter Seventy funding was increased, that is, the money to all the schoolchildren throughout the state. And we also fully funded for the first time since fiscal year oh eight, something I know Dennis is familiar with, the circuit breaker, so-called, a measure that I had co-sponsored with Senate President at that time, Tom Birmingham, years ago, to provide additional state funds for the extraordinary cost of special education. Going to the next slide, Emery, is for Milton. Milton's total local aid share of the state budget is nine point three million dollars. That's based on a town budget now of about somewhere north of ninety million, so we're providing about ten percent of the funding through the state. Unrestricted is two point seven million. The Chapter Seventy, the funding for the schools, five point seven six five million. I did include an amendment that was adopted that changed the funding formula to provide an increase to communities like Milton and actually there were a hundred and eight others that we were able to statistically prove were short-changed by the formula, resulting in a little extra bump that will be recurring. We also had the Chapter Ninety funding funded at two hundred million dollars. This came through my committee as the Chair of Bonding. The amount is the highest ever. It was the same as last year where we increased it by thirty-eight percent over fiscal year eleven. Again, with limited revenue, we're returning more of it to the cities and towns, including Milton, for local aid for the schools, for roads and bridges. Milton's portion is six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in Chapter Ninety funding, based on a formula determining the total road miles, population and employment. So the town is able to use that Chapter Ninety funding for local projects like rebuilding and repairing the local roads and bridges. The next most important item perhaps we addressed in the recent legislative session. I happen to serve as Vice Chair of the Healthcare Financing Committee, and this was an extraordinary, extraordinarily complicated measure. In about two thousand and six, we passed healthcare reform in Massachusetts. We're now ensuring about ninety-nine percent of our legal residents and, you know, the highest in the country. There's a lot of debate on this on the national stage. I'll tell you, on the state level, it is working. The second and far greater challenge, and we recognized it even then, was to try to control the rate of increases in healthcare spending. If we do not, it will swallow our ability to really accomplish anything else in state government and town government and in businesses and our families. We have the premiums increasing, expected to double from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty healthcare spending in Massachusetts unless we do anything. It will now, it would be the majority of our state budget and really wipe out our ability to adequately fund the schools, police, public safety and the like, and has the same effect on small businesses. This measure is that we've passed, and to try to simplify, an extraordinarily complicated measure is financially geared toward incentivizing outcomes rather than the fee for service that we're all used to. If you have, you go to the doctors, you go to the hospital and you need to have an X-ray or you're sent to have an MRI and the like, it's just billed to the insurance company here rather than just sending people for additional testing, et cetera. It's really promoting results, promoting wellness, promoting disease prevention. I think, you know, we have an expert here in Milton who will tell you that some sixty percent or more of our chronic illnesses are preventable, so this, this measure is a very complicated, but we think, well-written, well-conceived plan that brought together all the various stakeholders, including the very important employers, and including, I worked very, very hard with Milton Hospital and their parent organization, now Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, to reduce the burden of this measure on that institution from an estimated eighteen-plus million dollars to a couple of million dollars. They were very, very pleased with the outcome. And in any event, I think this healthcare cost control was the most important measure that we passed, not just for cities and towns, but for small businesses and families throughout Massachusetts. The next item, I don't, is, if you have it up on the screen, we passed an economic development and job creation bill. I was the Senate floor leader of this bill, which is designed to help spur the economy, create jobs in a number of different measures. We had significant investments in our innovation economy, particularly through some of these matching grants through our higher universities, our higher education facilities in Massachusetts. We have infrastructure investments. We have private partnership, private-public partnerships to help spur economic development. We streamlined the permitting processes for businesses. We extended existing permits that had not been used, permits that had been granted but had not been used during a down economy. We extended the timeframe for those. We had some measures to facilitate the expansion of new and existing businesses, some workforce training dollars. We established a sales tax holiday to jumpstart retail sales, and we have some targeted tax credits for things like historic rehabilitation, brownfields cleanup, et cetera. Give an example, closest example with that would be the Baker Chocolate facility that I was involved with, the renovations down there where they use historic tax credits to help preserve and promote some additional housing. We created something called benefit corporations where, we're familiar in Massachusetts with C Corps, with S Corps, with LLCs. We now have something called a benefit corporation where a company can be formed with, without breaching its fiduciary obligation to the shareholders, would have the opportunity to consider the public benefit alongside shareholder profits. This is, came to me really on the ball field in Milton from my friend Tracy Gorfinkel, whose son Brian, I mean, whose husband Brian coached my son Mike in, in baseball this year for Milton and suggested this. We looked into it and indeed, we passed it into law. We think it will help promote some socially conscious investment in Massachusetts. We think this is ultimately a job creator. Think of it like the, almost like LEED-certified buildings or some other imprimatur, you know, good housekeeping seal of approval. This business will be able to hold itself out as a B Corp doing the, the public good while doing good for itself at the same time. I had a measure for energy efficiency project funding that passed the Senate. We believe would create some ten thousand jobs in Massachusetts. Ultimately was not adopted in the House, but we'll be back with that next year. That's probably my number one priority to help create jobs in Massachusetts by retrofitting industrial and commercial office space throughout Massachusetts. We think there's a greater financial return than there is in investing in these new in, in alternative forms of energy in reducing the energy footprint or, or carbon emissions from our existing facilities, and we think it helps create jobs if we had a, we had, I worked with Chase to put together a two billion dollar mass development bond offering that would afford at no cost to the taxpayers, about two billion dollars, about three and a quarter percent interest for private developers, about two and three-quarter percent, triple-A bond rated for public creating, we think, an estimated ten thousand jobs among our hard-hit building trades. So we expect more on that next year. The next item is casino gambling. This was not something that I was particularly keen on. The reality is, we had no choice. The federal government had granted the Mashpee-Wampanoags federal tribal recognition. They are almost certain to receive the second step, which is their land held in trust, recognized by the federal government, which would allow them to open a casino. We felt it was important for Massachusetts to get out in front on this so that we would be able to regulate it and tax it. Otherwise, they would be able to do it without any significant regulation by the state and with no tax benefit to the state. We also estimate that it would provide ten to fifteen thousand long-term jobs and generate hundreds of millions of dollars in tax revenue for the state. of millions of dollars in tax revenue for the state. We're estimating that currently we're losing in excess of $1 billion to neighboring states for Massachusetts residents gambling in Rhode Island and Connecticut and New York primarily. Next item of significance that was passed in this legislative session was the habitual offenders bill, so-called Melissa's Law, named in honor of Melissa Gosell, whose dad, Les, really led the charge, and he is an accountant who works here in Milton, and in memory of his daughter, who I believe was a schoolteacher, and Randolph had been killed years ago by a person who had been convicted multiple times. This imposes a three-strikes rule on violent repeat offenders. So those convicted three times of specific, very violent crimes are considered habitual offenders and ineligible for parole. We also saw up in, I think it was Woburn, where a police officer was shot and killed by habitual offenders. So this was something that's been a long time coming. We passed a measure on foreclosure prevention, to prevent unnecessary and unlawful foreclosures, to reduce the number of abandoned properties throughout the state, made significant changes to existing foreclosure practices, tried to clean up defective foreclosure titles, and imposed some additional requirements and restrictions on banks and other lenders. The Division of Banks will have to report to us. I'm also on the Joint Committee on Financial Services each year, so we see how this measure is helping Massachusetts families. We have... Technical difficulties, Mike?
A little bit, yeah.
I haven't been here in a while. I'm trying to cram a lot of stuff in. In, in Milton, we have, out in Houghton's Pond, this comes from my days working with Mrs. Rizzi on the Milton Board of Park Commissioners, where we had a shortage of ball fields in Milton available to our exploding young population with all these new leagues and the like. I was able to secure for Milton's use the state ball fields up at Houghton's Pond, and they just reopened. I had secured $1 million in 2008 to renovate those fields. We've just secured an additional $1.8 million for further improvement. So there'll be increased parking, there'll be comfort stations, we now have sprinklers. These facilities are used by baseball, youth baseball, T-ball, Little League, softball, lacrosse, soccer, very highly used. I'm working with Dave Pertios from the Park Department, had him involved in the design of this facility. The beauty is, it's not only paid for by money that I secured from the state, but it also will continue to be maintained by the state. So these fields are almost exclusively used by Milton's children. They get first dibs, and they're going to be absolutely beautiful. We also just did about a total of $4 million worth of other projects in the Blue Hills, including, we have a picture here of a ribbon-cutting in July with Governor Patrick for a new bathhouse at the Beach area. All right, so then we have the Transportation Bond Bill, which, again, I chaired the committee that passed this, and it provided for existing transportation improvements through fiscal year 2013 across the state, authorizing the state to borrow a bond. $683 million helps us leverage federal funding of almost $1.4 billion. Interesting to note that in this down economy, our bond rating in Massachusetts was actually raised, so state finances are, are solid. Some of the projects of note from Milton that were included in that is, we authorized $2.7 million to complete Phase 2 of the Blue Hills Parkway Project, something that I've been working on for a number of years. Not too many years ago, a young child was struck by an automobile over by the Tucker School. We made significant improvements with money that I'd secured to revitalize that intersection by the Milton Food Mart. I also was able to put the arm on N-Star when they were looking for permits to, went to, went to Blue Hill Avenue to, at the same time, add traffic lights down at the intersection of Canton Avenue and Blue Hills Parkway, saving the town about $750,000. But we estimate now Phase 2 to be $2.7 million, including really the area from Mattapan Square, the gateway to Milton, up to the Milton Food Mart, Brook Road. We also authorized funding for improvements to Brushhill Road and Truman Parkway, and the reason these roads were selected is because these are state roads. For East Milton Square, which is something you were just discussing and will go into in greater length, allows the town of Milton to make the necessary parking and aesthetic improvements, and authorizes $1 million for these improvements. As, you know, I mentioned, when Dennis Cohen and Transportation Secretary Rich Davy and I were in the square with the Milton merchants, 15 years ago, or 20 years ago, there was a discussion in Milton that we were only at about 95%. We had a 95% residential tax base, meaning only about 5% commercial, and that was putting extraordinary pressures on our residential property taxpayers, who were faced with really incessant pressure to either raise taxes via a Prop 2.5 override, or potentially short-change important funding for the schools and the like. And what's happened in the last 20 years is, we've actually gotten into a worse position. Now we're about 96% or 97% residential, and so, to me, and to, I think, all of us, it's critically important that we address the needs of those Milton business folks that are here, so that we can promote and foster an environment that allows them to succeed and flourish, and allows the residential property taxpayers in Milton to have some relief. The fourth item is, that was contained in the Transportation Bond Bill, down on Granite Avenue, across from the entrance to the Expressway, there's a state highway yard of about 10 or 11 acres, and I've long desired that the state transfer some ownership of, ownership of some or all of that parcel to the town of Milton, so the town of Milton could have an opportunity to potentially further develop and create some additional commercial tax revenue in town. The next slide shows the proposed Blue Hills Parkway restoration for Phase 2, again, making serious traffic flow, aesthetic, and safety improvements when you enter the town of Milton from the Boston Line. For those folks in my neighborhood that would go down Elliott Street, take a right, and then try to get into the left-hand lane to either go down Blue Hills Parkway or Blue Hill Avenue or Truman Parkway, you're often putting your life in your hand. That is a serious, serious safety hazard that we seek to address, but also significantly enhance the gateway to Milton. Okay, East Milton Square parking. Everyone here, I think, is, is quite familiar with the long history. I seriously commend, seriously commend each of the selectmen for their leadership. Each of the three of you have been vocal in your desire to address the longstanding need of the merchant's niece Milton to increase and improve the parking, while respecting the memorial, the tribute to the former state representative, and to ensure that the aesthetics and safety of all are improved. Going back as far as the 1950s, when the Expressway was, this canyon was created through the town of Milton, Milton has been divided, and there have been efforts, we've done some research, going back to, there was a state representative, a one-term state representative in the early 60s, whose family's still in town by the name of Sheldon, that at one point had a design for a building over the Expressway, similar to what we have in Newton with the Sheridan. There's been a lot of efforts through the years, and finally, in the 1980s, former Congressman Brian Donley was able to secure, I think it was about $10 million, to create a deck over the Expressway. When it was finally completed, in about 1997, right, really at the time that I had been elected, there was a effort to name it after former Representative M. Joseph Manning, and it was called the Representative Manning Community Park. And there's been some discussion as to whether or not changes can be made to that parking area due to Article 97 of the state constitution, that requires a 2/3 vote of the state legislature in order to make changes to parkland. I, for various reasons, stayed out of the debate, but I will tell you, I never was convinced that there was a need for a 2/3 vote of the legislature. I saw this more as a deck or a lid over the Expressway than as a park, and even if you have a park, like Houghton's Pond, you make some changes. You don't need to always go back to the legislature for a 2/3 vote. Be that as it may, I saw an opportunity in the recently passed Transportation Bond Bill, which requires a 2/3 vote, to include a provision, to make it very clear that the town will have the opportunity to make the necessary changes to support our businesses and to make the area more, not just aesthetically pleasing, but welcoming and usable. I've never seen, you know, any young mothers out with strollers on the, you know, in the green space. It's just, it's, it's not functioning the way that we'd like to see it functioning. So one of the things I did include in the legislation was a requirement that any changes result in not less than 40% open recreational or green space. The next slide talks a little bit about the available funding to make these changes. Milton currently has some $900,000 in high-priority federal funds available. Milton has to put an approved project in place, and I have a commitment now from the state that we will provide the necessary 20% match, or $224,000. It brings us up to somewhere around $1.125 million available as soon as we're ready to go on this project. There was an additional appropriation of some $900-plus thousand, some of which has been, actually, of one, of, of a million-plus dollars, some of which has been utilized now for the planning. I think we've spent somewhere around $150,000 or $160,000 in planning. About three weeks ago, the President, President Obama sent a letter announcing that any federal earmarks, I believe it was from the years 2003 to 2006, not used by the end of this calendar year, would be lost. So in, Milton will lose, because of not having an approved project in place, approximately $1 million. There was $833,000 state dollar, I mean, federal dollars remaining. We estimate the state match somewhere around $175,000. That money is going away, and I've met with the Secretary of Transportation and with his Chief Financial Officer. We think it is virtually impossible for Milton to get in place the necessary design approvals, et cetera, in order to utilize this money. We think that money's gone.
Can I ask you a question, Brian? In terms of East Milton, you're right, we may not be able to get a plan in place, but my understanding is what's going to happen with that money, it's going to basically get reshuffled around to other project-ready, I mean, shovel-ready, basically?
This is happening throughout the state.
Is there anything in Milton, I guess, that would qualify for maybe redirecting those funds someplace else within Milton?
There's another project over at Curry College, but what's, what's happening here is happening throughout the state.
Yep.
And the Secretary called me personally, knowing how important this is to me, and, we went through every hoop possible to determine if it's, if we could get this approved by the end of the year. I don't think we can, but I don't think it's that bad a news, so I'll get to that in a minute. But that money, if it's not used on this project, and there are other shovel-ready projects in Milton that are eligible, I mean, in, in Massachusetts, it would go to those.
Right.
And then if there weren't sufficient projects ready in Massachusetts, it goes to other states. So we do think Mass may lose some, some money on this, because of these earmarks that we never acted on.
I guess my question, though, do we have any other shovel-ready projects? And, and one thing I can think of right off the top of my head, but I don't know if we'd consider it shovel-ready, is, pretty soon, Central Ave is going to fall into the, I mean, Central Ave is, you live up in that area, it's deplorable. You know, if, if we could redirect some of that money, we don't have the money to fix Central Ave. With all the transportation money, you know, we don't have it.
Stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay? So the good news is on this, that there's, I've worked very closely, by the way, with Bill Clark, with the Town Planner, I should have mentioned, he has absolutely been on top of this, and represented the town very ably and very well. And his estimate, and it's just an estimate at this point because it's not design-ready, is that the project that we're looking at, envisioning for East Milton for this parking, is about $1.4 million. And so we still have $1.125 available today, and he and I have a plan to get the additional $275,000 that's necessary. So we think we're going to be okay. But I think it is important that we finally act now, so we don't lose this next...
Bill, can I just ask a question? I'm confused now a little bit, because I thought we were talking about $1 million in extra funding. Now, originally, we have $1.7 million?
We have two $1 million earmarks.
Okay, and, and one of them's going away.
One will go away.
And the, the other one was one we already had, right? So, and I thought there was, I thought there was a...
We still have a million.
Right, but, but that's, that's the million that we've, we've always had.
We spent $150,000 out of that first million, so it's 850.
Okay, but originally, we had $2 million.
Right.
Originally, I mean, back two years ago, we, we had $2 million. We spent some of it down to do the study.
We'll go through those numbers, then.
Okay.
We'll give you that number.
Okay, I guess I'm confused as to where the other million comes in.
Right, the state, we, we authorized an additional $1 million in the Transportation Bond Bill.
Right.
Something I put in, that's what you're getting to. So we'll get to that.
Okay.
But there will be, at the end of the day, we believe there'll be sufficient funding. I think more of it now is going to have to come from the state than had been previously planned, but I think it's important that we not let this next round of money pass us by. So, next slide, if you would, Emery. I mentioned, the town has engaged consultants who have conducted multiple studies hosted along with the town officials, multiple community forums for interested citizens and the business community. These experts have identified the two best options to address the parking, traffic flow, safety, aesthetic, and community park functionality needs of the town. And so it is really now the selectmen, I think, who will determine which plan to adopt and allow for an estimated $1.4 million improvement in the East Milton Square Business District that we think can take place next year. And I have up here the, the two Plan A that was just shown, as well as Plan B, which is the plan that's preferred by the merchants. So here I have some very, very good news. As was included in the Transportation Bond Bill, as I suggested earlier, it permits the state to transfer all or some of the state highway yard on Granite Avenue to the town for possible commercial development. This state highway yard on Granite Avenue is a prime and underutilized property that could provide commercial tax dollars to the town through development, and would provide a significant boost to Milton's local economy. I've just gotten a commitment from the State Transportation Secretary that a portion of that yard will be declared surplus, that Milton will be able to... of that yard will be declared surplus, that Milton will be able to take possession of this property located right off the Southeast Expressway with frontage along Granite Avenue. The surplus area that we expect to be conveyed to Milton is expected to be some 5.38 acres. Could have a value in excess of $6 million. We estimate that this could generate an additional $10 million in tax revenue to the town of Milton over the next 20 years, could generate significant additional improvements, and for our business persons here this evening, generate millions in additional businesses for area shops and restaurants, et cetera. I just, for example, spoke with a hotel developer who has some 50 properties today, who indicated, he estimated the value of the land at about one and a quarter million dollars per acre, so north of 6 million, maybe 7 million dollars. And that if, again, has to be a long charrette process, agreed to by the neighbors, a long, long process. I just afford the opportunity to the town, but it could be something that generates significant revenues for our schools, for our police, public safety, public works, and keeps pressure off local property taxes.
Certainly hotel area isn't creating.
Hotel I mentioned, just because that is something that has very little impact on the town. No children in the schools. It's right next to the on-ramp to the expressway. We allow by state law you to tax hotels higher than any other entity. There's a surtax that is allowed on hotels, and if, if you had a restaurant in there, a meals tax component that would go to the town.
Right.
So, just one thought, and, and it's a long way off, but Milton's going to have a very, very good opportunity. So, I wanted to go and just talk finally about some Mass Works grant opportunities for the town of Milton that I'm working on with Bill Clark. First, for the business districts in town, these beleaguered business districts that have sometimes been swimming against the tide, the hard-working men and women that have these small businesses. The Mass Works grant is, is designed to provide for infrastructure that supports economic development and job creation. I've worked very hard to actually obtain these funds throughout the state, throughout the, my district. Here in Milton, a couple of business districts that have worked to secure funds include Milton Village, and we've seen tied to that million-dollar Mass Works grant was the development at 88 Wharf and some, and the restaurants, some of the work that's gone on down there. Also had worked to secure a million dollars for the Central Avenue Business District that's helped result in a revitalization of that area, including now we have a new bakery, we have a wonderful breakfast shop in the plate, we have soon a new restaurant, we have, God willing, someday, a development at the Hendry site. We have a development going on the front half of the parcel in front of the Milton Hill House, and this, these million dollars, two $1 million grants, we think played a part in that. I'm working now with Bill. We've met with state officials to secure an additional one and a half million dollars. The grant application is due on Monday. The money is to be awarded in November, late October. We're cautiously optimistic in that this funding would address some of the concerns at Central Avenue. It would also tie in Milton Village and Central Avenue Business Districts into really one seamless village, all with the same period lights as we have on the other side, and this was key, I was keen on this back when we got the money for Milton Village, that we have the same lights on either side. And it creates a more aesthetically pleasing environment for businesses and, and really leverages private investment, but there's also some significant infrastructure improvements, some money that would help Joe restore High Street, and I know that's important. We've heard from Milton businesses about the concerns down there. And I'll just show you a couple of visuals and what could happen there. The, the points in yellow, starting at the bottom left, shows the new development that's just gone in at 36 Central. Again, we think that was a public-private partnership, the town, through leadership of the selectmen, the planner, and the town meeting adopted a mixed-use zoning. We have the state funding of a million dollars, and we have the new condos down there that are selling like hotcakes. There's the proposed mixed-use development at the Hendry site, just to the north of that. Next to that, you see the Fallon Building with that, we have the New Cakes Bakery and a new restaurant. And then further up toward Milton Village, we see where there's a development proposed, and I think it's actually been approved by the, by the planning, by the zoning board. Without going into all of the details, this just shows some of the things that we hope to do. That shows the proposed mixed-use development at the Hendry site, but we've, in the last, you know, 15 years, I worked with then-Speaker Finneran to secure funding to open up the majestic beauty of the Napontet River that had been covered and overgrown in that area. We have the new multi-use path, the bike path that's heavily traveled. We helped save those historic presidential conference trolleys that were going to be destroyed and terminated. But what we do under this, this grant, if we're successful, if you go to the next page, is actually create a new park on the Milton side of the river by that trolley stop. So, we think that, you know, we're trying to help improve not just all the business districts, but all the gateways to Milton, and that's all I got. So, the, the effort really over the past couple of years has been to promote small businesses and help small businesses throughout Massachusetts, and a big part of my focus, of course, is in my own district and here in my own hometown of Milton. So, I think we have some very good news. We have an opportunity to help these merchants and help the town and the taxpayers.
We do appreciate all the hard work, Brian. It's wonderful. But again, could, could I just try to understand, because I'm still confused on the money. We, we originally had 2 million dollars when we started the East Milton Square project. We're going to lose the, what we haven't spent, a million dollars, the 2003 grant with a, that was-
Is, is that a given?
As of right now, that's probably a given.
The letter that we received a copy of today indicates that you must identify the project by October 1, and you have to have funding obligations by December 31.
Yep.
And could, is, in terms of those funds, there's no way we could move it on the fast track?
The short answer is no, because if you look at what I just handed you, this is how a project gets developed through the process. We just completed the planning study. Now, we're into the environmental study. If you go on to the next two pages, they'll tell you all the steps that are involved in We are at the point that we have concepts. We do not have design engineering. So, we have to go in and develop a municipal design agreement with Mass Department of This alone should take four to six months. Six months is what they tell you. If we tried to use every strong, strong-arm tactic that we could, if we leaned on Brian, we're not getting it any faster than four months. I need it by the end of October, so that's not going to work. If we threw away all the state bidding and went out and said, you know, Howard Stein Hudson did our original plans, Howard Stein Hudson do the plan, have it ready, and get it ready to go, I still have to go through, I need a project needs form, then I need a project initiation form, and this is all done in concert with the district, Mass Highway District Office. And they do theirs in concert with federal highway. So, I'm still waiting, and I'm still another four months at that point. Then we get eligible for a Mass Department of Transportation file number, which gives us money, allows us to get in line for the federal funding. Well, we already have that. But I can't, once I get that number, now the federal money coordinates up with, with that Mass dot number. I still have to go back and go through MEPA and NEPA. Well, none of this project needs MEPA, but it does have to go through NEPA because it's a federal project. So, I still have to go through design permitting and right-of-way with the fence. So, I'm, I'm months away from being able to come in and say, here's my plan, this is what I want to do. And if you truly take the time to read what each one of these things does, you'll see why it takes that long. I agree, it is too long, but that is the process.
But the reality is that the project, they estimate the cost at about 1.4 million dollars. There's 1.125 cash on hand now, which is $900,000 of federal money, $225,000 of state money. What you're referring to is I had a million-dollar additional bond authorization, so we allow the state to spend money on this project. There'll be $225,000.
Okay, but that will take the federal money that, and-
It, it-
Okay, so, so replacing one set of dollars.
So, it leaves a delta of about 250 to 275,000. I've spoken with Bill. There's a possibility the designers could scale it so that they can meet that number, and if they need the additional 250, we're going to get it. We're going to work like the Dickens to get it from the state. So, at the end of the day, Milton is going to have the money to do this project, and it's a significant sum of money, but I would respectfully urge you to act deliberately now so as to ensure we don't lose out on the additional money.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think your comments are very well put, and I do think that the selectmen, we've been dealing with this issue for quite a while, and Bill's given us a great input, and Joe Lynch has been involved, the Traffic Commission's been involved, and I think, I think we're getting near decision time, and I think it's important that we act on it. And just, you know, my question about getting those federal funds seems no, but the good news is, well, there's another, another avenue for funding.
Right.
So, we've got the funding. Now, we need to act. I mean, I just, I'm at the point right now, especially after Bill's comment tonight about the slip, slip lane and saying, well, it's one-third less now. I'm interested in experimenting with the closure of the slip lane and see if that works. And then, you know, Wyze's now got two plans before us that Bill said are basically a little bit of the 150, 160,000 we spent on the Howard Stein-
And I think I do want to, I do want to talk to Bill and everybody here about timelines in terms of, you know, seeing the rest of this occur. Getting back to the, the 800, 100,000 we're going to lose, there is nothing else in Milton right now that we could urge the state to re-divert that money to?
I don't think there are any projects that would be eligible per the federal government.
That's what the Secretary-
Yeah, we, we actually looked into that, Tom.
Okay. Even with the, even with the bike path going up Central Ave and, you know, trying to re-divert some money over there?
You have to have an application in that Mass Highway and have that purchase number that Phil would refer to. You have to have a progress number assigned to it already in order to even begin to think you're going to hit sometime this fall's timetable. So, it's shovel-ready, really means something like 75% design ready to go up to bid.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that design.
That needs the federal highway requirement.
We don't have that design.
And what I would-
Does Central Ave have a purchase?
Central Ave has a purchase.
So, what I would, what I would suggest, we, I mentioned I chair the Committee on Bonding, Capital Planning, and State Assets, and that's about $5 billion of the state's 30, you know, $5 billion spending each year. We're about to put together, in collaboration with the executive branch, the bonding plan of the capital plan for the next five years. I'll have an opportunity to weigh in. If there are additional projects that Milton is keen on, I would love to hear them. Now would be the time, because this is happening this month, actually. But in terms of what's before us, this is really an extraordinary, particularly in these fiscally perilous times, an extraordinary state investment in Milton for the businesses. You know, I think we should, we should move ahead, whatever you decide, on, on, on the East Milton parking. We also have, I think, an extraordinary opportunity coming to us with this six-acre parcel, a five-point-something acre parcel, right at the entrance to the expressway. And we have an opportunity to really revitalize two business districts. Now, we're going to do three business districts. We're going to do East Milton, and now we have an opportunity, it's due Monday, and we're cautiously optimistic, to tie together Milton Village and Central Avenue. You know, we have, we have a lot going, and we're also going to be pushing to fund the improvements on the Parkway and the Truman Parkway and Brushel Road as well. So, we have, we have a lot going, and I think it's important that we push forward. In addition to the Mass Works grant due Monday for Central Avenue, Bill and I have talked about it's a, it's a shorter, quicker access to that cash. We may submit a second one for the, any money necessary, the 250 or 275,000 necessary for making sure East Milton, the deck is done perfectly. So, that would put our request up to 1.75. I'll push hard. Again, we're cautiously optimistic, and I think at the end of the day, this is going to be very, very good for Milton.
Yeah, clearly, the, the Central Ave district looks, I mean, 1,000% better than it's ever looked, I think, in many years that I can remember. It's, it's come a long way. It is a shame that Hendry's-
And I also wanted to say that my, my initial, initially, I reached out to not just to you, the selectmen, but to the planning board, to the developer, Mr. Conley, Mr. Conley Senior and Junior, to try to see if the state could pick up some of this infrastructure burden so as to make that property economically viable and, and competitive for that developer, but still address the town, the neighbors' concerns. And I, I met with the two Mr. Conleys, as well as with Tom Hurley, as well as with the chairman of the planning board, Alexander Whiteside, as well as with Bill Clark, and each of us, selectmen, planning board, planner, state senator, worked very, very hard to try to get to yes. It just wasn't to be, but I didn't want to, at least at this moment, pass up the opportunity to get this funding for the benefit. Ultimately, it, it will benefit that site, but in the meantime, it's going to develop, it's going to benefit the entire town and all the adjoining sites as well.
Bill, is one of those improvements going to be the bump out of the sidewalk on the other part of the crosswalk there, or?
Yes.
Okay. And that application's pretty much ready to go, the Mass Works application?
Yes.
Great, okay. Now, can we talk about the East Milton Square project in terms of where we have to go from here to get?
To get to there?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I have three hours left in my 40s. I'm going to leave now.
Thank you.
One of the things that Brian just talked about was Mass Works. Under the Mass Works, I showed you last time what 1.5 million would be, and the list that Brian just had up, went through, we gave a description of those. We've been talking for the square. So, if we put in between 250, 275 for the square under Mass Works, what it would be used for is design engineering, signage, and wayfaring. Because of the process of the very lengthy planning process that is required by Mass Department of Transportation, we may be able to jump the, jump the gun a little bit- we may be able to jump the gun a little bit by looking at, if we, we can get to the $250,000 quicker than we can get to any state monies. So we can get some of that design work done ahead of time. If we get the, if we get that money the end of October, beginning of November, we can start spending that right away. We can start at that point hiring an engineer to do the design work so that we can start working on the environmental study, so that we can get to the point of going out and getting the project needs form, filling out the, the project initiation form. We don't need to access the federal money at that point. What we're doing at that then is to save the federal money for implementation completely. Because what we have to do in the end is petition MassDOT for use of those funds for a specific purpose. And that's going to be for construction.
And, and once we get the, the first four of these things done, planning, environmental, funding, final design, then it's an easy, then you've got what you need to.
Again, yes. And when you turn and look on the inside, for as simple as that front page is, the inside's a little more detailed. There's, there's a series of plans in there, you know, commonly referred to as the 25% design for roadway projects. There's another one down on the bottom that, you know, talks about the 100% design and then the implementation. There's several steps in the way and there's several forms that we have to do first. You have something to say, too? Mr. Lynch, please.
Yeah.
I don't do this alone.
I've actually been through a number of projects that are on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is where all federal monies have to funnel through to get into the state and into the communities. And the most critical element is getting the design contract competitively bid and awarded so it can move forward. The 25% design plans, for all intents and purposes, look like something close to going out to bid. But what they're intended to do is to bring the project development along to the point where you can conduct a public hearing. Now, this project, being as unique as it is, has vetted the issues. What types of things might come up in a public hearing? I would hope the process we've gone through has narrowed that down and there'd be no surprises. So you would, you would put the award out and you'd get a contract, design it and bring it to 25%. Once you get 25% plans, they get submitted to district office with the then review. And that's that timetable where it's out of our hands, other than us putting pressure on them. Four to nine months, not unusual. Four months, extremely optimistic. Six months, nine months, a year, not unusual. Assuming we can push it through in four months, gets us into a public hearing process sometime around the holidays. Once you get your public hearing under your belt, there's a public comment period, 60 days, 30 days?
I think it's 30.
30-day public comment period where people who attended the hearing, who gave testimony, are also invited to then back it up in writing.
Where is the hearing?
Here in town.
It has to be local in town. Mass Highway conducts the hearing. We've done it in the library. We've done them in bigger venues, like out at Full Village. Usually they're, you know, very well attended, you know, several hundred people come to them, depending on the sensitivity of the project. So once the public comment period is complete, Mass Highway District Office comes back and they look at those public comments and they issue basically a scoping certificate of these elements that need to be implemented into your design. The town has to then decide on the politics of it. Is, are those things that people don't want? Are those things so critical with the design that we can't accommodate the federal highway requirement and satisfy the local desire? So that, that's something that's always a little uneasy. And again, we vetted that, I believe. I think through this process, we know where we're at. They're going to please everybody, but I think Senator Joyce is correct in selectmen giving us some direction on a plan that we move forward with.
So what I'm hearing here, too, is we really can't do this piecemeal. It's got to be part of one project.
It really has to be done as one project. Once the public comment period's closed and the scoping certificate is out, you then complete your designs. And again, they call it a 25% submittal. To bring it from that point of that hearing to the end, couple of months, few months of design, and it's, it's ready to go.
And the 200 or so thousand dollars would be enough to get it from, or at least get that, the Mass Works portion of that would be enough to get through that 25% design base?
I hope so. Well, at that point, we can start using the million dollars to, we can tap into the other one. It's just, we have money upfront that, we know a million isn't enough. We know we need more. We want to be able to tap the other money first.
And I can put out a self-serving plug, too, that because we are talking a park here, if we can somehow get the business community behind the Community Preservation Act, that will give us a little more money to put into the park portion of it. So.
I think.
Self-serving plug.
Chairman, I know you're in front of the chamber to explain your position there. We're dying for air.
Great.
I know that you're, you keep asking, there are some of the smaller things that we can do now. I know that Joe, Chief Wells and I were talking earlier about doing things like looking at closing the slip lane Monday. What would it entail? We talked about it. We can probably do that.
I'm certainly very eager to find out what would happen. I think we all are.
Yeah.
Well, if you're telling us, we can do it starting Monday.
Do it, try it out. Okay. I'll make a motion to close the slip lane for a test period.
How many days?
What's the recommended days?
30 days?
30 days.
For 30 days.
Second motion. Okay, motion made second. Any discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
You got it?
It's coming Monday.
All right, we had, there's a few other things, like when you read into the book itself, into the East Milton Square Parking and Access Study, it was identifying parking spaces. And we know where those spaces are, but it goes back to signage, putting up the signs. It goes back to taking the signs on Edge Hill Road and making them say something. Right now, we have blank signs. So the postmen park there all day because they can.
Right.
We don't have, it was talking about using some of the parking on the west side of Adams Street and moving down a little bit and making some of the ones further down the service-owned parking. Some of those things we can do now. I'm not, I'm saying this and I have no idea what Joe's budget is. I know.
No, for, for these things, I mean, the coordination of the signals in the, in the line painting, there's probably.
I think some of the lines here and there, I.
Between $70,000 and $80,000 worth of traffic delineation would be required to bring this thing in through, through a Band-Aid. I think the ultimate goal that I would have visually is let's get those stock barricades out.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem is with a roadway that was once opened, that is not physically closed, the MUTCD, Manual and Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices. MUTCD requires those crossbar barricades be in place until the road is physically closed. So we're going to catch 22 until you physically take the step to close Adams Street down.
Well, could physically closing it just be a curb across it?
To physically build a curbing. That's why I'm saying numbers like 50,000 to 80,000. You'd have to literally build a curb, build a sidewalk.
And then, I see people shaking their head up there. I know you wanted to say something, Paul, go ahead.
If I could, I would say that, that no need to spend that money. We don't like the barrels. They're ugly. But I would also ask respectfully that the board make sure that we do as much striping and delineation before we close the slip lane. We, if you look at the plan at the block, we've talked about that as item number six, is say, do the delineation, do the striping, do the arrows, and then close the slip lane two weeks afterwards. If we close the slip lane, it's my fear, the chamber's fear has talked about this, that we may fail when we should succeed. So we need a little bit of that work.
Can we do the striping at least on Adams Street as it goes up towards Boulevard? I mean, that's how we're really talking about is, is that portion.
Yeah, the arrow, as you come around, I think it all should be, but a little bit of dotted line is not a lot of money I would suspend.
I'm seeing the plan for the first time, so the answer is that just arrows. The reality is, is the arrows are painted by our contractor. I have no idea what his contractual obligations are ahead of him right now. We'll see what we can get as far as them ordered and get them painted. They have to be done tonight. Just a matter of finding what, what they're worth and getting them painted.
Somebody delay the 30-day trial period until we get that done.
And again, I don't know what's already out here versus what's new. But if, you know, if each arrow's worth like $75, call it $100, keep the math easy.
Here's what you have.
You probably have, you probably have $3,000, $4,000 worth of arrows.
You have them up here. You'd be getting rid of that one. This one, you'd be putting them in here. They're talking about putting them up in here.
And further out on, I think, further out on Adams is an indicator, I believe what Paul has said earlier makes a lot of sense. Cars are parked at that signal. You're not seeing in advance that you need to be in which lane.
And then in front of the Shell Station, as you approach the Shell Station on that corner. And lastly, if the barrels are brought across the clip slip lane, I would suggest, just a suggestion the architect you made, the architect said, take the portable sign and put it right there at the barrels and say, merge two lanes right. It is on the plane, plan. So that it sticks out nicely and it says, merge two lanes right. Because technically you have three lanes now going to two once the slip lane is closed. Thank you.
And I think wayfaring the vehicles through that interchange is an easy enough thing to do. What can't be done, I don't think, is the Adams Street, creating the double lane for the two right-hand turns. That requires.
On Adams Street coming the other way.
That requires like removal of the existing lines.
But that's not going to impact the slip lane test, I don't think.
No, I don't think it's exclusive to the slip lane test. I think that would be an overall improvement in the long run. But I don't think you'd have to do it in order to test that slip lane.
Yeah, so if we could just do the, the wayfaring in terms of the, the arrows and everything, enough to get people around and not through the slip lane.
So am I hearing?
In front of the post office, up to Bryant, and then getting them around the corner, basically.
That's what I'm seeing on this sketch, yeah. And that, that makes sense. I mean, certainly anybody who doesn't see those arrows probably doesn't deserve to have a license to be in the proper lane. I think in order to make an earlier vote more accurate, it would be to direct the Public Works Department to, to paint the arrow wayfaring on the roadways and to then commence on the following Monday, the closure of the slip lane, which would be in place for 30 days.
So you want to make a vote to reopen that motion?
Move to reopen the motion that I made. Second.
Okay, so motion's been reopened. So now you can.
Now I'd like to make, to add to that motion, Mr. Lynch's comments, so that they'll precede the closure of the slip lane.
So to, to do the, the arrows delineating lanes on Adams Street as it goes by the post office, by the Shell Station, and then around to the fire station area, basically.
Ms. Good. Second.
Second. Okay, motion made second. Any discussion?
Did I hear an appropriation of funds? Oh, Bill, do you have a source for that? Is that the project?
Part of the project. That's what, if we get to 250, we can start doing that stuff now. Which is why I'm putting it in Monday.
Okay, so motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now, how much is it going to cost?
I can, I.
Ballpark.
The first time, just in arrows alone, looking at about $5,000 in arrows, full, $5,000 in arrows.
That's probably all we're really talking about.
The closure, the closure of the slip lane itself, minuscule. We already have the barricades.
Okay.
We have, we have the barricades. We'll use the sign from the other side, just move it around.
Yep, okay. Let's see what happens. And then, you know, I would be, I would really like to get it looking a little nicer as soon as we could. But I know that's more money than we don't have access to right now.
That's the catch 22 we've been in. The hope was that the project would move along sooner than that we could take the barricades down. This was really, the entire routing was a 30-day experiment about four months ago. And it's working so well, everybody decided to leave it there. But because the road is closed, we're forced into using the crossbar.
Now, now, second question.
Cross three barricades.
If we tonight, I, I guess the question, I guess for the other two selectmen also, are, are we down to Plan A and Plan B in terms of is this the route that we want to go? And if it is, do we want to take a vote so that the, we can stop the process going of the preliminary study and?
I have a question on the, on the park itself. Looking at what's here now, looking at the plan that is being put forth.
Yep.
Right now, there's a lot of fairly mature trees that you cannot have with this plan because you don't have enough cover. You, you need some of the cover from some of those deeper wells. I think what we're talking about is having the vegetated green area, but the design of the vegetated green area. When we do the design engineering for this, that's when they get underneath it and look and see that everything can bear what we're asking it to bear. I know there's a series of pipes for the different irrigation systems, for the different lighting systems. Taking and trying to open up the middle of it, I understand why you would do it. But I do think that you may want to leave some of that, whether it's for the aesthetics of the, of the existing vegetation, whether it's for taking, trying to move some of those more mature trees to the side. Again, the green in the, with the trees does block what's in the middle. It does provide that barrier. This summer, if you look through it, it was fairly green. To have the lawn in the middle makes sense, to have the open space. But I do believe that you want some of the trees in there at the same time. So I'm not sure that.
Let me ask you a question. Could that green be hedged as opposed to?
I would like to see something from a landscape architect to go in and look at the bushes and say, which ones have to stay, which ones can go.
I can understand one on the perimeter, you know, some barrier around the perimeter, but.
But that can come in the design engineering component of this.
I mean, some of the subtleties that if this is being used as open space for performances or whatever, music, which is also a performance, some verticality in the, in the greenscape acts as a silencer from the other, the din of the highway noise. So I think you want some of that, but again, I don't think we're bound. I think your caution is you don't, you don't want to be bound to have it dead flat. You want it to have a general concept of layout utilizing some of the green that we have.
Yes.
Yes.
What the green, what the green looks like, what the parking lot's going to look like, those are up to the engineering components.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And also said is that, you know, the areas within the parking area, parking lot, that, that show as green. Those too can have vertical tree features incorporated into them, so. But I don't think we can confine ourselves to flat lawn area.
I want to make sure we don't get ourselves confined to that.
Right, I understand. And I can understand certainly wanting to have something around the perimeter.
That is in the design clearly, that the perimeter should have bushes, trees, shrubs. Some of those trees, we believe, can be saved. Those planters do not get lower. They stay at 18 inches. So behind there or somewhere, you have the hotwoods. That shows, what you're looking at here, gentlemen, is simply the concept of striping with arrows.
Circulation.
Right, circulation. But if you look at this, the chamber, everybody else wants all that greenery there and all that buffer zone there. We absolutely want that. So just to be clear, we are, we are, we definitely want this raised here. It's about eight to 10 feet now. It could get a little bigger if you thought so, Bill. I understand that. But that is definitely in the design. That raised planter stays. And as far as buffer zone and silencing, you know, putting new arbrevidis or something like that would be fantastic in there. And let's not forget the functionality of the beautiful plaque circle of history, that people will be able to look at all that, walk around and see all the different plaques there. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that Bill's absolutely right. We want to protect as much of that greenery as possible. Don't, please don't get confused by this plant, which is not showing that, okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
So, I mean, that being said, I, I do like Plan B mainly because it keeps more park, keeps more green space, and, and, you know, allows the possibility of more commerce taking place on, on the park, basically. And making it something that will draw people in. So, and again, I think it's more, more in keeping with the, the forty percent idea that was in the Brian Joyce's bonding, hybrid bonding, Bill. So, like I said, we could take a.
I share your preference for Plan B, it's just that.
I guess we don't know yet because we don't know what the, the.
That's, that's the whole thing, that's why I think we should leave.
Wait until that.
Plan A in our thoughts, too. Even though we may prefer the B, but we have to wait to see how the.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that, I agree with that.
But that shouldn't stop, Bill, from pursuing an RFP for Design Services to follow either of those two plans through a design competition, perhaps as part of the RFP process. Maybe someone should summarize on what they're proposing. So we could, we wouldn't necessarily lose the thirty days during the test?
Okay. So right now, we don't pick a plan, we just, we just throw out they were both plans? And, and get some design studies and some, you know, send an RFP out there, it's going to be this or that, and.
The, the word of caution on the test, though I'm very confident it's not going to blow up. I was confident in the last one, circulation was put as a test. I think I've looked at, we did some counts in July on the slip lane. We know how many people are using, that's what Bill came up with, the fact that we see.
Reduced.
That, yeah, two-thirds of the people, just by convenience, are circulating through the intersection the other way and avoiding the slip lane altogether. Without the, the ability to control the traffic signals, it's going to continue to function the way it is. And as Paul had recognized, is a few additional trips. It's going to maybe put a little bit of pressure on it in the peak mornings and peak afternoons. But the, all the other time, it's going to run pretty well. Very confident of that. But there will be a little bit of pressure on particularly Boulevard at Granite and Boulevard at Bryant, just during those peak hours, but even if that won't, I don't think it's going to blow up.
Right, right.
But we don't have the ability, the way it's currently built, to coordinate those signals in a more automated fashion to relieve that.
That will come eventually.
Out of the, the overall design.
Got you, okay.
There are two issues on the side of this. Coming like, since you took the plan in place, and if you notice, we put a signboard on the deck at Green Avenue, all summer, telling people stop and turn right on red.
Yes.
That issue is, turning right on red still may be an issue. You may, you may not be able to have it based off of your red light and the green down, turn right. Because it just seems looking at the people that are going forward.
Well, and not only that, Chief, it's a good point, if you don't mind, I'll mention that now. Is, is this crosswalk to three here, there's a signal pedestrian call button. A pedestrian calls that signal, and he gets a safe to walk sign, and we've told these people, take a right-hand turn, and they're encountering near misses because they're not paying attention to people on the sidewalk. So if we continue to this in the long run, there's going to be some reconfiguration of how people get across that intersection.
Well, you know, that happens in Boston all the time. I, I mean, it drives me crazy, but you, you go anyplace in Boston, that happens on a regular basis.
These people have, these people have a safe to cross signal.
Right, I'm telling you, same way in Boston, it's exactly the same.
They just jump out in front of you, the cars do.
They, they take a right on red, yeah. They're not supposed to take a right on red and yellow, but they still do.
But that aspect's definitely, I think, from the traffic commission, we want to address that aspect of who you decide to try to want to go with, because that's going to be an issue. The second thing is that we've committed, we've had discussions all this year on the traffic commission, about the whole last street, overpass, about the possibilities to make it that way, to grant some relief to governors.
I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me, just doesn't.
It, it, it does in that, if you look at the pressure on those neighborhoods and the power of reason that it's causing, that you have to all the way around the square to get above the other square.
But where, where the congestion is, is before you get to that, the congestion is, is by, by the funeral home, it's, it's by, by the bike shop. That's where, that's where it all backs up, so that's why you don't want to go down there. So you cut over by, you cut over by Darcy's, and you go through rather than trying to deal with that. And you don't, I think you're going to exacerbate that because you've got people going in all directions. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I think we need to look at it. It may not, but it may, I, I think we have to remind, it's one of the ways, when we did talk to Howard Stein, which was the one conversation we had, they ended up looking at, they didn't really.
I think what Richard's talking about is, if you take away the sidewalk over here, what, if you take away the sidewalk.
On one side.
And there is a breakdown lane on that side, too. So you take the sidewalk and the breakdown lane, and then you maybe take away this sidewalk and replace that sidewalk inside, now you have the three lanes. Now you've got two that are going as designed and one that's coming straight up.
I'm trying to figure out where, where we're looking at right now in that.
Here's, here's the Shell Station right here.
Okay.
Here's the fire station. I just took a left off of Granite onto Boulevard and came straight up.
If we, um.
Instead of going up like we all do, we take that left here and come out Boulevard.
Doesn't that make another whole white cycle?
No, because you give a left, you gotta give a left, hour turn, left on the street.
There will only be one, there'll be one left lane in here. Instead of only having two lanes right now that both go east, there'll be one that goes west.
Are, are you going to back up traffic on Edge Hill?
It can only come from here. Well, they're already on Edge Hill.
Yeah, I think, if people are trying to get into the square from, from Edge Hill Road, I think you're just going to back up further, yeah?
Our thought process goes, we can't, no, and Joe, you know, what they're trying to do to change the sinking, change the cinder game in the red light. And if you look at traffic heading northbound Bryant Avenue, the only way to get to the Cunningham Park side is to go to the whole square. And if you could just create a third, take one side of the sidewalk away, create a third lane on the northbound side, and you get a left turn only, left off of Granite, straight up, now become a strip truck, because if you remember going back to the original plan, Howard Stein provided, talks about making Edge Hill one way with Angel Park.
Yes.
Paul, if you pull up Plan B, the smaller one, if this is a knee-jerk reaction, I choose where this conversation's going, we almost are inviting exactly that behavior through the parking lot by allowing a left-hand turn into that parking lot, circulating them through, and then out. They're going to, someone eventually is going to figure that out as a shortcut.
Going both ways. We, we picked out a roadway tonight, is that people are going to use that. Unless, well, we find a way to regulate that somehow, people are going to use that as a shortcut, too, especially if there's any congestion. You can see, the hours invited, just to say right now, cut through.
That would not be an easy shortcut because it would be tight in there, and secondly, there'd be signs, do not enter in some areas, no through traffic. The police would have to look at that, I believe, I agree with you, sir.
I don't think no through is not a real sign.
Well, well, I. You, if you try to cut through there, I think you'll find that somebody else is going to come in front of you, a car's going to be pulling out, it would actually be a problem. I don't think it would be a convenient cut through, but that would take some policing, I believe, that's true.
No design is, no design is perfect, and it's legal the way you look at it.
I don't see any harm in studying, even if they rule out that it's impossible, the Boulevard two-way concept. It, it may come back and say, you can get something out of that, and we can return the level of service to something.
You're hiring a design engineer.
It'd be crazy for us not to consider it.
Mr. O, you, I, if you go back to what you, I know you say you don't see it, but I really think based on all the work that they've built it, and what we got, talking to Howard Stein before they left, I think we need to at least look at feasibility. Because if this would work, I think this would be probably the greatest relief you could give to them. Because remember, the difficulty we have on Plymouth and Governor's is two communities. Neither one of us can make a decision without the other one consent. That's, that's the dilemma we have.
As long as you bring up Governor's up, too, that, that no left-hand turn when you get down the end was supposed to be a trial period, but is the trial period over now?
It'll be only a general, it's on for this.
Okay, because it's not working.
We don't know that, we're aware of that.
I mean, yeah, you're right, it doesn't hurt to study it, it's a study, you know?
We can ask them to look at it.
Yeah.
Fear would be if we put one point two million, one point four million into this, and there was a solution we didn't consider for no extra money, same on all of us.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to understand that it works or doesn't work.
I just have my doubts, that's all.
I'm not, I agree, I'm not saying, but I, I think that we've looked at so many things, and there's so many alternatives.
No, I understand, I understand.
Okay, do we want to make a motion, or at least in spirit, that we support Plan A and Plan B, subject to adjustments?
I think Bill's right, I, I think we just let, make a motion to let him go forward with the, with the plan phase of it, and put, put them both out there, and then we come back and pick the one we like out of what comes back out of the, the various, similar to what we did in Governor Stotan.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion, or is it needed?
Well, I, I guess a motion to, a motion to stop the, the planning study phase of the East Oak Square project, using the concepts of Plan A and Plan B.
Second motion.
Does that make sense, as a motion? Okay. Motion been made, seconded, any discussion? Seeing not all's in favor?
Aye, aye.
unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda, we, it's been a long time coming, we're going to get to, four gentlemen are waiting to hunt deer. We have a discussion for a request on archery deer hunt, and Chief Wells, could you stick around? Could you stick around for this, please?
You want to do that now, yes?
Yes. Hi, how you doing?
Good. How you doing?
Good. I think I've met you before.
Yes, I've been here before.
Welcome back.
How you doing? Thank you. Give it a try, baby. Again, we're actually here to see if we could get back.
Could you state your names, please?
Oh, my name's Alan Mulaney. I'm fifty-three years old, I reside in Quincy, self-employed electrical contractor. Have approximately eighty electricians working for myself, Franny's. Franny McWade, he resides in Waymouth, works for the Quincy Fire Alarm Division.
Okay.
We're both, you know, professionals in what we do.
Okay.
Take everything very seriously.
And you're putting in a request to, to do an archery deer hunt, and had you, because it wasn't anything specific in terms of where you wanted to do the deer.
That's correct, I kind of left that open-ended. Last time I was here, I asked for Harland, Harland Street.
Yep.
There's a lot of our conservation and swamp area back there, and it's not that thickly populated. You do have the, the boundaries to shoot archery. Archery is basically when you're, you're up in a tree and your elevation shot is about, about a twenty-degree angle.
You're shooting down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So you're not lobbing the arrows off into the woods.
Okay.
The equipment that we use is, we'll use climbers, so they don't have any effect on the tree. Or we'll use ladder straps, so you strap the ladders around the trees. I know there's a lot of deer in the area, and, you know, with the Lyme disease that it is right now, and the overpopulation of deer, it's just something of, it's a passion of mine. I like to fish and I like to hunt, so if there's nice fishing area, you try to go to the good fishing area. Plenty of deer in Milton, there's, I, I just don't know what to, sorry. So, I would like the permission to hunt on a town property, and if that's not possible, if you could, I don't know if hunting is even allowed in town, I don't think it is. Hunting allowed in town?
Archery, archery is allowed, can be allowed by private property owners, if they meet the parameters of some, or following some.
Exactly.
Which is limited in, pretty much to certain areas of town.
Green Street, I know, had some.
Burn can.
Yes.
I think they just opened up Green Street to, over by Canton.
No, I, I'll, I'll address how, if you recall, there was a oval, or there was a project that took place on Green Street, Poshing, Cana, Poshing, built last year, where a group of private property owners allowed hunting during the deer season. The bad news, I will tell you, is that there were numerous violations that occurred with that. The difficulty these two gentlemen have is, and I'm not speaking against them, is speaking more from a pointsy point of view for, for communities, be one thing if, for the selectmen, they thought, say, okay, gentlemen, you people can go hunting in the area restricted to just the two of you, and it's just not why you can.
Right.
The difficulty is that with deer hunting, particularly bow hunting, it's quiet, discreet themselves in trees. We do abut a significant part of Bull's reservation where we, there is no hunting period.
Correct.
Last year, we had numerous violations where the hunters crossed over, set up deer stands on the Bull's reservation. It's just, I just don't believe that it's something that we should really entertain at this point. I don't think, his merit to it, I understand his merit and his, his sense of adventure as being a hot dog and a fisherman, I'm an avid fisher myself, but I just don't know how we can police this to control exactly where people, you know, we don't really have drawn delineated lines in our conservation area, here, there, our property, DCR property, I just.
I understand, and that's why I wanted you here, to talk about the, the public safety issue of it more than anything else. But, I mean, clearly, the, the, you know, the, the amount of Lyme disease in the area, the, the deer population is, you know, just ever increasing in the area, and it is a problem. I mean, as much as I think deer are beautiful animals, I don't like to see them splat on the road, and, and it's dangerous, and, and what they're doing to the, the foliage and the deforestation of, of the Blue Hills is, is fairly significant, and it's going to get worse. So, you know, I think we should at least try to do our part, and, and our part's pretty small because we don't have much land that would even be, in terms of town-owned property, that would even be.
Yeah, that's obvious, I, I don't want to quote, I don't, I don't need the quote. I thought, I'm not just talking to you last year, it could be one, Danny Swanson is the personal reener of Green Street. Thought that they took ten deer during the annual season, during the archery season last year.
How, how many deer is each hunter allowed?
You could have two bucks and one doe, and then you just file for a doe permit, and they'll give you another doe permit for five dollars, so you can, you know, as many as the state will give out.
Okay.
And they typically have an overabundance of doe permits.
Okay.
So I could, you know, probably get five doe permits if I went up there. Season begins October fifteenth. Archery will go through late November, but primitive arms comes in through the first of the year. But I strictly archery hunt, I don't, I don't use anything else.
So October fifteenth through what date?
I don't need that.
You have the senior packet, which has.
Regulations.
The regulations for, would have been a handout that Paula gave you tonight.
If, if you go to the firearms, the both, the shotgun and the, and the black powder season, I do not see anywhere in this town that you could safely illegally hunt with shotgun.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would agree with that.
I would say to you, if, if you'd allow, I will reach out to the environmental police, and I will also reach out. I have, we had a, the state came in last year and met with the Green Street residents, their biologist, as far as the Lyme issue. I'll write to them and ask them for written opinion as to whether or not they think, just from a Lyme disease point of view, if they think that we should, you, the town, should look at authorizing bow hit.
Well, I, I guess, can, can we, and I agree, maybe we're not in the position right now because we don't have a mechanism in place to enforce it. But can we maybe work with these gentlemen so that next year they can come back here, and we will have something in place that, you know, is, is it viable? You know, whether it's mapping, whether it's, you know, requiring anybody that wants to do, to, to bow hunt in Milton to come to the police station for a permit to do it? I mean, you know, I don't know what it would be, but is there any way we can work to kind of do that?
Yeah, so the, let's go to the private land, the private land exemption is still going to exist, and I expect that there are going to be the same landowners in town that have allowed deer hunting in the past in their property. I know of two commercials in town that both allow it, they've done it for years. Maybe what we'll do is between this year and next year, if I come back and give you identified locations where it could take place.
Yep, and some way of regulating it.
Including that which would come under your control, which would be the town-owned property.
Mm-hmm.
One of the difficulties that we did have two years ago was that there was a hunter hunting on town property when he was confronted by residents. hunting on town property, and when he was confronted by residents, he tried to disarm the residents by saying, oh, the town approved this, and I was sent here by the selectmen, which clearly, that wasn't the case. But one of the things that we do find, and this is the difficulty, and I understand where these two gentlemen are coming from, last year, the residents on Green Street authorized their own, they had their own individuals, they approved the hunt on their property. But once word got out, within days, other hunters started to come in, and when, it's very difficult, someone's going in 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, secreting themselves in the darkness of the night into the woods, engaging in a sport that makes no noise to begin with, it's tough to police. It's very difficult.
Sometimes, you know, that, when that happens, they're spoiling it for others who try to do the right thing by approaching the town and asking for permission and, you know, actually having a permission slip on your person, so when you're hunting, if somebody approaches you, you do show them a letter stating that the town did give you permission to hunt.
As I say, I'm not even sure exactly all the, if we're talking about properties under your control, I don't even have them all delineated yet.
Right, I understand that.
Because it's always been, it's always been a no, you know, no is no, so I've never even really sat and looked at. I mean, you're talking, you're talking potentially Quarry Hills, you're talking the dump road, you're talking places that you have a vested ownership in that could fall under the parameters of analysts, you know, of archery non-bow season.
Right, and we also have control to say, no hunting in those areas if we want to.
Absolutely, you do.
So I guess that's, I think that's what we need to do.
Right, I think we need to put some, if we're going to look at it, and going into the, which was part of what the Green Street residents did last year, they based their want to do this on the whole Lyme, you know, the surge in the deer population, and if we're going to move that way, then I agree with you. Give us some time to do due diligence on it and come back here from now and give you a report. I'd really want, I'd want.
He goes on the east side of Randolph.
I'd really want massive environmental police to weigh in on this.
Sure.
Really would before, if that's okay.
Could you maybe report back to us in six months in terms of progress?
Yeah, oh yeah, we'll do that, so that we're ready to go for next year. I could do that.
That'd be great.
So this, so this year's out?
This year would be out.
I don't see any way, because we just don't have the mechanism in place. Unless the other selectmen disagree with that.
No, I agree. I agree with the chief, yeah. What about liability? How does that work?
Excuse me?
Liability, insurance, like, or?
You know, some towns will require liability insurance. I have liability insurance. I have gotten permission from other towns and cities to hunt their property. It's been very successful. When they do, you know, the high rate of Lyme disease, it's all about the Lyme disease and then the animals running out in the middle of the road.
Yep.
Getting crushed by vehicles.
It is true that in this town, the car is the real, only true predator of deer in the town of Milton, as a car.
Yeah.
You do have some coyotes. I think, I think last meeting we were here, one of the gentlemen was talking that he saw, before he came into the meeting, saw a coyote chasing a deer down the road before he came into the meeting, so that does happen.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's getting out of control, so.
I have them in my driveway.
Yep. We've got them in the driveway. So as far as private property, sir?
That's anyone, so if a person owns, it's legal in the town of Milton if a person owns a possum land that meets the parameters of, I think it's 150 feet and 500 feet between, and one of the difficulties is sometimes property owners get into, it's from a dwelling, it's 360 degrees, so maybe I'm enough from Bill Cock, who's on my right, but I'm only, you know, 50 feet from Lisa Murphy, who's behind me, it's 360-degree circumference on the house, on the person giving me permission, and also on the roadway, so there aren't that many locations. There are some, there definitely, there are definitely some, and they, and most of the ones who do have it, know it.
Yeah.
They know it.
Yeah.
But it's not something that either us as a police department or the board, I think, would want to try to weigh in on the private property issue.
Well, I mean, it's legal, you know.
Right.
So it's outside of our purview anyway, so if you want to hunt on private property that meets the requirements, and the owner's willing to allow you to do it, then, by all means. So other than that, hopefully next year when you come back here, we can have some rules in place.
Yeah, I guess there's always next year, it's a little time to see me yet, right? So we'll come back next year.
Okay.
Another shot. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Mr. Chairman, can we move to item 19, because that's Lisa Murphy sitting there?
Yes.
And that's just a request to use.
Thank you.
Peverly Park.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to take, we're all out of order today, we're going to take item 19, which is the Tucker Neighborhood Association use of Peverly Park.
I just came, just in case there were any questions. I didn't realize I was going to be lost on the news. Hi. Do you have any questions? It's pretty standard, I don't.
It's just a neighborhood picnic?
It's a neighborhood picnic. I put everything I could think of, whether or not we actually have a, anybody wants to bring a grill, I kind of suspect they won't, but I wanted to put it on there just in case.
Okay. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a request from the Tucker Neighborhood Association to use Peverly Park.
Peverly.
Peverly.
Also known as Pope's Pond.
Yeah. For its annual neighborhood picnic on Sunday, September 9th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM.
Second motion.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry to keep you all night, but.
Yeah.
Go.
Let's see.
Yew and Rink?
Yeah, let's go.
10.
Okay, item 10 on the agenda is the approval of the concession bid award for Yew and Rink. And I guess we got one bid.
One permit.
That was from, the bid wasn't quite conforming, but it was the only one we received, which was from Milton Youth Hockey. And the reason it wasn't conforming at this point is because of insurance requirements that weren't in it. Yep. But what we're suggesting is that we just have it a one-year contract, so that we're coinciding with the end of the permit.
State.
Well, the end of Curry's contract.
Right, that puts us, that puts all of our permits in line.
Yes.
Right now, Curry's got one more year left on their permit. If we go and do what we put out, it would be to the end of our special permit, and we could be running the rink next year. We need to send it back out for management next year, so it would make more sense to put the whole rink together rather than segment the rink.
Yep.
There was one other piece in there that I didn't put in. I actually talked to Mr. Zona today, and he said he understood that it should have been in there, that was the 30-days' notice that we have with the state. The state has a line in there that they can remove us with 30-days' notice. We have it written into Curry's management contract that they could be out in 30-days, should the state enact the same, and we would put it into the same contract with Milton Youth Hockey concessions, the same 30-day language that's in the management that came from the special permit that we have with the state.
Understand. Okay. Anybody else, and it's a $3,000 payment, is that what it is?
They're in there, yes.
Anybody else have any questions about this, or?
I sent you the.
How do we do it with, how do we leave it with the insurance?
It would be contingent upon, so the motion is to approve a contract between the Milton Board of Selectmen, Milton Youth Hockey Concession to operate concession stands at the skating ring, 2012, Tuesday, Thursday. Skating season is subject to the receipt of successful insurance requirements. That is the motion.
Second motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
The rink did open today as scheduled.
Good.
They had their first renter this morning at 6:30.
Really?
Commonwealth figure skating.
Oh.
They rented for two hours.
Huh.
They had practices this afternoon, starting this afternoon.
Hope there'll be another successful season.
Is their new manager at work?
They are, and I should have grabbed Richard, they are waiting for a Cory report. There's a Cory and a, I want to call it a Sori.
Sori.
They're waiting for those two to come through. I did hear the person that they have an agreement with, since he works for the Braintree School System, I don't think he's going to have a problem passing either of those two.
Okay, good.
So.
Thanks, Bill. See, item, item 11 on the agenda, we're going to, I think defer on, that's the Third Amendment to the Energy Management Service Agreement, pending more information that we need to make a proper decision on that. See, number 12 already done. Number 13 is a discussion of town administrator search, and basically, all we have to do at this point, I believe, is just appoint the committee, because we didn't appoint the committee last time. We do have everybody in place with the exception of the government study committee's appointee, because they won't be meeting until September, so they will make their.
September 13th is their next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so they will make their appointment on this, in the September 13th meeting, and then we will approve that appointment at our.
At the 20th.
On the 20th. Okay, and then we also need a motion for the charge to the committee, and this is basically the charge that we chose last time, is that what this is?
To approve the appointments?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the appointments of the following residents to the Town Administrator's screening committee. John Carroll, Town Administrator from the town of Norwood, Leroy Walker, Kevin Keating, and William White.
Second motion.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Do we need to put what's above that into a motion?
That's a second motion.
To approve that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the following charge for the Town Administrator's Search Committee. Not more than 10 days following the deadline for submission of resumes, the persons appointed to the Town Administrator Screening Committee shall meet and begin the process of reviewing applications for the position of Town Administrator. Not more than 30 days following the date of the first committee meeting, the committee shall submit to the Board of Selectmen the names of not less than three, not more, not more than five candidates whom the committee feels meets the criteria set forth by the Board of Selectmen. If the Board of Selectmen decides not to appoint a Town Administrator from the list of candidates submitted by the committee, it shall direct the committee to submit names of additional candidates to the Board of Selectmen. Upon the appointment of a Town Administrator by the Board of Selectmen, the committee shall be discharged.
Second.
Make a motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I know at the last meeting, the Board did task me with getting a cost analysis from three consultants. I've only heard back from two to date, so I will have that cost analysis for your next meeting on September 20th.
Okay, great. And we did go out with, you want to go with the, because I don't remember exactly what I wrote, but the, the.
For the two.
Basically, what we're looking for that, that person to do is.
The two cost analysis that you had sent to me was to reach out to qualified candidates, review and help with development of a job description, provide technical advice to the search committee, and background and reference checks.
Yes, so that's what we've gone out and asked.
So that's what I put out to the consultants and asked them to give me a ballpark of what that would cost.
And two of the three responded?
Two of the three have responded. I just don't have the third yet, so I wanted to have all three.
When did it, when did it go out?
Last week after your meeting, but the third one was on vacation.
Oh, okay.
So he will have it by the end of this week.
Oh, good.
So on September 20th, our next meeting, we should have our fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
And we should have a consultant picked?
You'll have the consultant.
Would that be correct?
Well, we'll have the.
Cost analysis from the three consultants, and then you will make a decision on which consultant you would like to pick.
We'll have that before the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So we can, is it possible to make a decision on the 20th to get it going?
I think we probably could, sure.
Yes, sure.
We'll just have to kind of work through, yeah, we'll have the cost analysis beforehand, so, yeah, we could, we could discuss it and make a motion at the, at the September 20th meeting, sure.
Okay, number 15 is approval of Celebrate Milton Proclamation. This would be a motion to approve and sign a proclamation recognizing the annual Celebrate Milton event that will take place on Sunday, October 7th, 2012.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve and sign a proclamation recognizing the annual Celebrate Milton event that will take place on Sunday, October the 7th, 2012.
A second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 16.
Item 14, Mr. Chairman.
On Miss 14? Oh, approval signage, okay. So this is a motion to approve the display of the five A-frame signs announcing this year's Celebrate Milton event at the following locations, Canton Ave, Blue Hill Parkway, Blue Hill Parkway at Blue Hill Ave, Squanton Street at Adams Street, Canton Ave, at Gallow Road, at Adams Street, at Randolph Ave, and with the permission of the library trustees and the school department, freestanding banners at the library and at the Pierce Middle School intersection of Central Ave.
Second motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And the second one is a proposed motion to approve and display, the display of a banner by Milton Yogurt on the Town Green on September 9th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, advertising a day of free yogurt that is being held on the gazebo on that day.
A second motion.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion?
So it's going to be advertised and the yogurt's going to take place?
Well, there's going to be other signs that we approved at the last meeting around the town.
You approved at your last meeting a sign at 777 Randolph Ave, which is the carriage house, and then this is just.
On the day of the event, they'll just have a sign up here as it's going on.
On the day of the event, just, so people will know when they're driving by or walking by what's, what's going on in the Town Green and can join in.